That's good. All right. And. Take it.
Can we throw something over that?
What?
And I was gonna take the laptop, but instead he didn't.
In the basement, the dank basement?
Um.
Well, you know, but maybe at a, uh, the, uh...
Good evening. Welcome to our 16th meeting of fiscal year 2017 of the Milton Planning Board. Whistle. I am Brian Fers. Folks, we're gonna get started?
Yeah. Here is.
I was still collecting that.
Hello? All right. Good evening. Welcome to the 16th meeting of fiscal year 2017 of the Milton Planning Board. I'm Brian Fers, Chair. I'm gonna ask, starting on my right, for my colleagues to introduce themselves.
Alex Whiteside, member.
April Lamoreau, member.
Tim Zerwinski, Assistant Town Planner.
Julia Getman, Clerk.
Mike Kelly, member.
Cheryl Togias, member.
Okay, we have a very busy meeting tonight, and I'm going to quickly read through the agenda. We're going to approve some meeting minutes. We are going to talk about our next meeting dates. Currently, we're scheduled for March 9th and March 23rd. We will, very likely, based on tonight's hearing need, ace another meeting on February 23rd, which will be discussed later. We'll have citizens speak. We will have a report from our town planner. We have three public hearings scheduled tonight. One is at 7:15. That will be for three different zoning articles. The Great Estate Planned Unit Development Bylaw, the Parked Plan Unit Development Bylaw, and the Recreational Marijuana Moratorium. At 7:20, we will hear from Pulte Homes on a special permit for cluster development. Milton Woods Town Farm Site continued from February 9th. At 7:30, we will hear from Dennis and Martha Burke for a special permit for cluster development. 245 Highland Street continued from February 9th. And that will do it for this evening.
And then we'll be out of here by eight.
We'll be out of here by eight o'clock. Uh, to Mr. Whiteside's point, we will start our public hearings at 7:15 with the zoning articles and the per- the special permit here, excuse me, the public hearings will then follow in sequential order as we finish up with the previous. We will not open and close, open and continue the hearings at their respective times. We have three minutes in our packets and that have been sent out previously to approve. We have one, January 12th, which includes changes from Alex Whiteside and was redistributed prior to tonight's hearing. We have minute meetings that were distributed for January 26th. I do not believe there were comments from anybody on those. And we have minutes from February 2nd that were commented on by Michael Kelly and Alex Whiteside, and those were incorporated and redistributed as well. Any comments or motions from the board on those minutes?
Did I actually have a set of minutes that I had no comments whatsoever on?
Those would be the 26th?
Yes. I don't think I actually reviewed them.
That's what I would expect as well.
Yeah, I'm sure. But so why don't we approve the other two?
All right. So can I have a motion to approve the January 12th minutes as amended by Alex Whiteside and the February 2nd minute, excuse me, 2nd minutes as modified by Michael Kelly and Alex Whiteside?
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We will look at the January 26th minutes for the, at our next meeting.
Could you all maybe move your mics up a little bit so that I'll do the same?
Okay. Is there anybody here this evening that would like to speak to any matter that has not been, not been announced to be on the agenda tonight? This is for citizens speak. Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to move to the, well, I want to move to the town planner's report, but I don't see yet a town planner.
An assistant planner.
How about that?
I wasn't ready for this.
Well, wait, I see the town planner.
Excellent.
So I'm gonna grab this from Bill and he's gonna start his report.
You're up. Town Planner's Report, please.
Bring the microphone closer to you.
We've been working on several new developments that are coming in and around town. Working with the Falconys on the Benz Building. Hear about that soon. To Adam Street. That one's coming. What else? Been working on traffic issues, trying to work with the town engineer on finding ways to look at different technology that's out there for identifying where the cars are, how many cars are in certain places. Been working with these, with the special permit for Pulte's, trying to, Pulte trying to get through the Historic Commission, which actually took place on the 13th. There's letters that are going back out to Mass Historic. Been working with Pulte's traffic engineer on the access point with DCR onto Unquity Road for the roadway. Trying to work through some of the issues of what to do with the remaining four acres that are left over after the sale of 30 acres to Pulte. Working on an RFP for the Selectmen on what to do with that. Working through some of the affordable housing issues with Woodmere that actually came through for an amendment. They have, they have the, they have the building permit for the affordable units in the back. They poured the foundations for those, so we're trying to move forward and get, get in front of those so that the applications can be taken and the waiting list can be started for those units when they come online, probably in the fall, early fall. I think that's enough, but...
You have five more minutes.
Do we wanna talk about the MAPC application?
Sure. And I don't have a copy of it with me, but we put in for a MAPC technical assistance grant to look at how we can redevelop the waterfront, how we bring the different groups together, what might we do down there. We've asked MAPC for assistance down there and we've made it through round one. They like it. They came back with some thoughts to it. We have submitted an application. Now we have a discussion that needs to take place on potential match. They're looking for a match and I need help with where are we gonna get it? How much? That's a question. We have money for our zoning codification, but that isn't exactly what the money was put there. There would have to be a change of use for that money. That needs to be a discussion that takes place with this board, not me making a decision and saying, "I wanna do this."
So that might be something we can discuss on the 23rd, based on the fact that, as we're gonna hear in a little bit, we're gonna need to have another meeting. And Tim, could you just quickly address for us the status of the codification based on my conversations with you and Susan Galvin and where we stand with the table of contents and what we may need or may need those funds for or not need them for?
So Julie Getman, the Clerk for the Board, has been working with the Town Clerk's Office on proofreading all of the, the way this worked is Bill had worked on putting together all of the articles that had been approved since 2009 up until the present day and putting them in the format that was voted upon by town meeting in 2014. The Town Clerk, in order to put her sort of approval on that document, you know, wanted to have a proofread of their own, so Julie's been working on that. They're almost done, right? Which is good. The, the issue that we have encountered is the, the article that was approved by town meeting in 2014 has very specific places in the appendix that are listed where each of those articles that have been approved since 2009 go. And since there had been a few that had been approved from that initial 2014 vote to today, it affects the numbering of those special permits that are very specifically called out in the zoning. So it was the, the, the Town Clerk had wanted to get an opinion from town council about whether we could make those changes without a further town meeting vote, because in the end, the document that we will have at the end of this process will be very slightly different numbering than what was voted on by town meeting in 2014. And, you know, and Bill, you can chime in.
We, we made an, I made a table of contents. With my table of contents, it went one through 12 at the time. Now we're down to 1 to 15. When you, when we started it, it would go, one had to do with Section A from something, two would be, and it would be B. As we had, had new articles put in, they didn't come at the end. Some of them went up. Then we had to do a correction because we had two Ls. So now one of those gets shifted down to the bottom. Well, if you look on the left side, there's numbering coming down. If you look on the right side, there's lettering coming down. One of them is going to be off. So it would read A, B, C, L, D, E. So we wanted to make sure we didn't do that. We wanted to try to keep them all sequential. And the issue is, without going back to town meeting and changing that particular page, both the Clerk and town council feel that I need to bring the table of contents page back in order to get it approved.
Back to where?
Back to town meeting.
This is a totally ministerial item. This is the index to the zoning that we're talking about. And why to index the zoning we have to go to town meeting is, is astounding to me. Absolutely astounding.
I'm with you, because I felt that it was just numbers and that it could just be done administratively.
Purely ministerial.
I, I will bring it back, but I've had that discussion twice now with each of those parties and...
In any case, I, I think I agree with Alex. I agree with Mr. Clark. If we do have to go back to town meeting, I've asked that we have a bylaw put, a correction, corrective measure put in place to fix this problem and then also make sure that on a go-forward basis, the board is able to handle these ministerial type adjustments without going to town meeting and taking up town meeting's time and explaining it every time.
I will heartily concur.
That is a fantastic idea.
Brian, question?
All of that in mind, I don't believe we still need to incur any of the $15,000, or at least not all of it.
No. I, I, I don't think so either. The, 99% of the legwork has been done in-house by, by Bill and Julia and myself. The only thing that would be outstanding is if it's determined that we have to go to town meeting, an article will have to be put together. But again, that's not, I don't think that that's gonna be something, I mean, Bill, do you?
No. I mean, I did the cutting and splicing. Tim did the, the pagination and, and the editing like that. Julia's gone back and been down with the Clerk, going through page after page, proofreading to make sure that what we passed is what we, we said we would have in there.
We'll have an update on the 23rd for this. Cheryl, you have a question?
The new website, does it allow for the zoning bylaw to be, instead of a PDF-type document, to be a document that can be searched and a section found?
So yes and no. There are some towns that do, I forget what the name of the product is, some sort of code type, sort of web-based codification. That's not something we have the capability to do right now. What we can do is, um, you, use, using the website we have and breaking the zoning from one single document into a section by section, chapter by chapter document, which can be searchable via, you know, the search function in your browser. So it's not quite a sort of, you know, web-based codification, but we can make it. There's other towns that have done this that have similar systems to us to, to be able to really break it down so that you're not just poring through 170 pages worth of zoning. You can really go to the section that you're, you're interested in.
Well, what does it cost to do the, the app?
Uh, I don't know. I know...
Because we've got some money.
Um, it's, it's probably more than, than what, than what we've got. And also, that's something, that's really a, a conversation the Town Clerk needs to lead, because you, you wouldn't wanna do the zoning and not do just the rest of the bylaw. So that's, that's a conversation for, to have with that office.
Could you have that conversation before the 23rd?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. We're gonna open our 7:15 public hearing for zoning articles. We're gonna start with the Great Estate Planned Unit Development. I wanna clear up a couple of things before we get started. The Great Estate Plan Unit Development was submitted by the Planning Board to the Selectmen for Inclusion on the Warrant on January 5th, and that is the article that we are discussing tonight. Over the last several weeks, this board has had public meetings, not public hearings, to discuss the context and the, and the text of that article. So the basic article that we're discussing tonight is still the one that was submitted, but there have been conversations along the way about it. We will be incorporating all previous verbal testimony on this matter and any materials that were submitted to the record from January 5th forward into the record of this meeting. All of those materials are available at the Planning Office or via our website, which will also provide links to the cable television transmissions of these meetings to get the verbal testimony. Because of the fact that we wanna make sure that the public that's here tonight and any other public that is watching on television or any other concerned party is just potentially hearing about this for the first time, as this is the first advertised public hearing, we will not be voting on this matter tonight. We'll be potentially voting on this matter at our February 23rd meeting, and we'll discuss at the end of the meeting any concerns about attendance with the board and, and how to deal with that if necessary. Are there any questions from the board on any of that?
Is the, we have what we submitted back in early January. A lot of changes have been suggested. And the way I see it is, next week, we would come up with a document that incorporates all the changes that are, have been suggested, and that we will then determine whether that document, we'll, we'll look at the changes, determine which ones we wanna keep, and then submit to the Warrant Committee a document with a number of changes in it. And I think that, uh, once we do that, we probably should have another public hearing on the document that we've submitted to the Warrant Committee, just because it will undoubtedly be, be a material change from what we submitted at the beginning of January. And the Planning Board is supposed to have a hearing on zoning, and if it's been materially changed, an argument can be made that we haven't had a proper hearing. So we would, we would submit to the Warrant Committee next week. The Warrant Committee would determine what to do, and we'd have a further, further hearing. And it might be that the Warrant Committee would suggest changes. So...
So we have a presentation, we're currently scheduled, and this is certainly not written in stone, we're currently scheduled to present our recommendation to the Warrant Committee on March 1st. You would be, you were proposing, I think, a public hearing in a, subsequent to the February 23rd?
Right. It would be subsequent to presentation to the Warrant Committee.
I see.
It's just...
So we'd have no recommendation at this time?
No, we would do the recommendation.
Okay.
But we would have another hearing on it, just so that people couldn't say the text that you were having the hearing on wasn't the text that eventually went to town meeting.
And we would potentially revise our...
No, it would be the same text as we adopt next week. We'd simply have another hearing on it. I mean, potentially, we could recommend changes, but we would go to the Warrant Committee with what we come up with next week, and the Warrant Committee will come up with a recommendation. And after the recommendation, I think that we should have a public hearing, because the Warrant Committee may suggest changes also.
Okay. I'll have to check with the Warrant Committee on that. But I, I understand what you're saying. I'm just concerned that if we have a public hearing after we've made a recommendation to the Warrant Committee, that we would then, if, if something came out of that public hearing that we would wanna then change, we would need to change our recommendation to the Warrant Committee.
Well, we could do that if something big came up, but, uh, let's try and make sure that something, that we touch the bases next week.
Okay. Let's, let's move on, and we'll see where we are on the 23rd. I, I hear what you're saying. I wanna check, I wanna talk to the Warrant Committee about that, make sure they're comfortable. Okay. So we have our January 5th language, but I think what we have in front of us tonight is what we've discussed over the last two or three meetings and made modifications to. So I'm wondering if this actually will get us to close to where you're talking about being on the 23rd, at least for this particular article? The article that Cheryl has marked up. You're concerned that the public hasn't seen it yet.
No, my concern is that when we recommend something that's materially different than what we submitted to the Selectmen initially, that it can be said we didn't advertise the article that actually is going to town meeting and that there is a technical defect.
I understand now. Gotcha. I understand now. Okay. Okay. So we're gonna be looking at a version of this that has been marked up. It's called Pulte Edits 21617. It was in your packets.
That, that's the special permit. We'll be doing that later.
Oh, sorry. You're right. We're not, not on Pulte. That's why, that's why it didn't sound right. Tim, which one is it labeled? Well, I know but it doesn't.
You fixed them up.
Which I was told not to do.
I mean, I, my, my, my recollection is that people tended to like the markups that Cheryl had made a few weeks ago. Those weren't in your recent packets, but you do have copies of those, and I am putting that up on the screen right now. This is actually the, the version that Mr. Dolly had marked up. Let me, let me go.
So the, Tim, Tim, the one that you're calling up is the one that we had on the screen at our last meeting where we discussed it?
Yes.
Correct? Okay.
But the hearing is on what we submitted. I mean, we could just take comments and note them down and, and then homogenize them next week.
But we've already homogenized this one.
So the question, though, is if their comments relate to the things that we've already been working on revised language on, do we mention that when the person is making the comment on that?
Well, we, we could, but I've been hearing the comments is, I mean, people can comment on your version, on the original version. They can comment, I mean, this is a public hearing. We're, we're just getting input from the public on, on the article.
So should we, though, review the suggested changes so that the public has opportunity to see those and before the, the comments, or we want comments first?
I think that, I, I mean, I have a, a document here that I've marked up your markup with more markup, so...
Right. We've spent two or three weeks on this already, and we've, we, we agreed as a board, after discussion, to allow the public to comment, and we spent hours and hours and hours on this over the last several meetings. I'm not comfortable with going back to what we submitted to the Selectmen after taking the time to do all that work. And I, I think it would be a disservice to the people in the public that sat through those three meetings to do that as well. I think we start with where Cheryl was last week. We can walk through Alex's comments that he's now added, or anybody else's comments that they have to that language. We can hear from the public, and then we can homogenize all of that for the next hearing. Otherwise, I think we've wasted our time with three public meetings that we all agreed were gonna be moving us forward so that we didn't have to start all over again today.
Well, Brian, is the revised version that you're talking about online? So that people who came here tonight had an opportunity to see that if they went to the...
They're all, everything, everything's online at this point. I'm not saying that's intuitive, by the way. It's probably confusing to have it all up there, but it's all there.
Well, I don't wanna foreclose the opportunity for people who came here tonight, maybe ill-prepared with this latest version, but using what was submitted to be able to speak.
We'll have another whole hearing in addition to this one next week as well, if there's any confusion.
Yes, I know, but we had a public hearing published for the article that was submitted in January. People saw that public notice, read the article that was submitted in January, because that was in our public notice, and came here tonight, potentially prepared to speak on this article. I don't think we should tell them that they can't, because we've...
I agree. They can speak, but I, I'm not, I'm not comfortable disregarding three weeks of work.
I'm not suggesting that.
Well, the other thing is, is that the, the version here, it's easy to see what the edits are, so it's not as if it's a clean version, you know? It's got a lot of edits that are very visible, so it would be easy for, I think, folks to be able to follow along with it.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that people who are in the audience know that they can speak about something if they haven't seen this.
Of course. You can get up and tell us to go back to the original. That's completely fair.
I think most people are going to want to speak to the article in general rather than details in specific, and that our going through the details is going to be extremely time-consuming and extremely boring and extremely non-productive at this time. I think that we should just hear from the public.
So April, to your, to your concern, this is, this is on the Planning Board website under the zoning articles, May 2017 link. This document, Great Estate PUD article edited 012617. This is the document that I'm referring to with Cheryl's edits. This has been posted on the website for anyone who's concerned. And in fact, subsequent to that, a, as was discussed at the February 2nd meeting, an edited version from one of the butters to the site, and also a redline version from the applicant to Cheryl's document are also up on the website. So I think in that regard, people have had, had time to take a look at those documents.
This February 16th hearing was scheduled to do this work tonight. The only reason we have anything else on the agenda is because our last meeting was snowed out. So we have to go through it arduously and in a boring way at some point, and I think tonight is the night we do that, because I don't wanna put it off until February 23rd and then have a snow night or not get it done and not be able to meet our obligation to the Warrant Committee on March 1st. That is the purpose of tonight's meeting, and I wanna do that.
I would support that.
And I think that's fine, too. I also wanna hear from the public.
We're absolut, this public hearing, we're absolutely gonna hear from the public.
Great. And we're all in agreement, right?
Well, I don't think we're all in agreement, but we have enough of us in agreement.
I think that a, a number of people have come on a number of items. The ICE House, Pulte, the Highland Street subdivision, and having to sit through, going through this, I mean, I've, I've got my handwritten comments that I will, I will specify if you, if you like.
I think we should go through it. This is far more boring, actually, so let's go, let's get through it.
All right.
Okay.
They can't hear.
You can't hear? Yes, we will speak louder. And I don't know if AV can do anything about that either, but it's noted for the record. And thank you very much to our AV people, by the way.
We also have a few empty seats up in the front if you're having a special difficulty in the back.
Do these microphones actually project into the room or just for the cable?
Okay, that's good to know. We thought they did. Okay, so Cheryl, you want to lead us off, please?
All right. Under the purpose section, I thought we should be more explicit about wanting to preserve open space and view corridors, so I've added language around that. Can you hear me? Then also, we talked about the preservation of historic structures and their conversion to condominium units. So I added at least two. Last week, we talked about a third, I think, at your suggestion, Alex. So, we should look at revising that language.
Unfortunately, I can't see this, so I'm going to have to leave the table and go down there. And I also have a number of comments on Section 1.
Okay, then we can go back to Section 1.
That microphone works, Alex, if you'd like to use that.
In Section 1, as I looked at the plan, I didn't see any triplexes. And so, I, looking at the most recent plan, I'd take out the words "or three."
I would not support that. I think we wanted to have an opportunity to have improvements to the site plan, and I think we talked about limiting the number of three unit, dwelling units, so that there would be a limited number, but I wouldn't support taking it out entirely.
We did discuss a limit. Sorry, we did discuss a limit. I'm just trying, did we discuss it in another section?
Yes, there's another section. Now that the lights are dim, but I can't see my notes.
That's right. So it was one per 20. That's right. So, that's correct. Thank you.
Now, do you have the section that that's in?
Do you have any comment to respond to Cheryl's comment?
I don't see any triplexes on the plan.
Well, that speaks to the question about zoning versus development agreement, I guess, to a certain extent, in whether we're zoning this specific plan, or if we're allowing for variation, which...
Right, I mean, I spoke previously about the fact that the plan, as it appears, is relatively cookie cutter in terms of units being lined up along the street with garage doors facing the street, and that we, I added language to encourage a little bit more variety in the site planning and in the architecture. So that was the thought behind having an opportunity for the triplex unit, or the three-unit structure.
So we don't have any idea where the triplexes will be. This is exactly the problem that we were discussing last week, that people want to know what they're going to get. And if you say you're going to, you may get a lot of triplexes, because somehow they're better than duplexes, then people aren't going to know what they're going to get.
Well, this is the balance between writing zoning, which allows for, sorry, zoning that allows for the site plan to be improved upon after additional information, additional design work is done. I don't think that everyone agrees that the diagrammatic plan, which is just a diagram, has been fully vetted to know that that is the best plan, and it can be accomplished. So the zoning needs to allow for additional design work, and it ought to encourage the opportunity for a better plan.
Okay, so we've got Alex's reservation here. I think we should make sure we go through and discuss all these points, but to Alex's earlier point, I don't think we need to make the decision on the language tonight, so let's keep moving. We've got, that there's a concern on this point. Do you have anything else on Section 1, Alex?
Yes. It says that the dwelling unit in the Greater State PUD is a two-story dwelling unit with attached garage. There will be some of those, but there will also be condominiums in the existing buildings. And I suggest that, at the end, we have language condominium dwelling units in dwellings existing onsite on January 1, 1950.
Okay.
Do you want me to keep track of that up here?
No. Okay, so let's keep going. Is that, that's it for Section 1, Alex?
Well, there are, yeah, there are some grammatical changes that I want made, but I...
We'll talk about major substance issues right now, so we'll move on from the grammatical. Okay, Cheryl, you're going back to your two, Section 2, please.
So, on the purpose, we talked about adding or changing the language, because one of the structures that Alex recommended having be preserved was not built before 1900. It was 1950, I believe. So this language would just need to be revised to reflect that.
Okay. We also wanted to make sure we put in some square footages. So, we have the square footages, which we can make sure we incorporate in some fashion, so that the homes are delivered in roughly the same size and configuration as well. So we have those notes for the last hearing. We'll make sure we get that in there. Anything else in Section 2 from anybody? Three permanent, three maintained homes, yes. Okay. That brings us to Section 3. And Section 4. Okay, 5. And 6.
Cheryl, you had something in 5.
Right, well, I think that's not really material.
Yeah, I think what we're trying to do now is just ask if there's any comments on Cheryl's language, or the existing language, just so that we can make sure we get all that out there for substance, and then we will bring forward a document on the 23rd to discuss what each line-by-line word changed.
I'm going to have more changes, then. You can be sure of it. I mean, you can discuss these changes, and next week I will have some more for you. You can have it at some point.
Do you have ones to add now, Alex?
Well, I have the affordable housing piece, which you've been given. And I have certain handwritten comments about the various plans, which I can read into the record, if you'd like.
Yes, that would be great.
I don't actually think it would be great. I think it would be useless, but...
Well, then, don't read them. Section 7.
So, this language that I added addressed, or was an attempt to address, not having roadways put into the setbacks, because it had previously addressed the buildings. And then also, adding language about the 75-foot-wide no disturbance open land along Canton Avenue. And then, a sentence about limiting the number of the units that could be within a 550-foot dimension from Canton Ave. And that had to do with addressing the fact that the site plan that people have been relatively supportive of has the units, for the most part, beyond the 550 feet, except for the existing buildings and some smaller number of the new structures. So, in the calculation that I did based on the plan that we have, that amount was 25%. That was an attempt to try and address the fact that we're zoning something that we hope to have a plan similar to what was presented.
And why has that language struck? Or is it not struck on yours?
It wasn't struck on mine, but...
Okay, fine, as long as it's not struck. Okay, do you have anything on Section 8 or 9, Cheryl? Well, 8, let's stay with 8, because 9, we have the affordable housing conversation.
I think others may have, and it may have been Alex who changed the wording from pods to units. And this addresses that condominiums could be created within the existing buildings.
Okay. Okay, affordable housing. So we have a language submission that came in, and we have the language in front of us. Alex, do you want to address your comments about affordable housing here?
If Tim puts it up.
Is it already submitted?
Yes.
You should have hard copies of this in your packets as well.
This has to do with the provision of affordable housing that allows off-site units.
Sorry, folks, the cord is a little loose. Y'all have to bear with us.
Well, Jim, while you're bringing that up, so the primary change here, Alex, is to allow for the off-site, the provision of the affordable units off-site, is that right?
Actually, what we want to do here is we want to permit the town farm building to be converted into two units of affordable housing, assuming that the trustees agree to that. And then, if that doesn't happen, we're going to need a change to this affordable housing provision to allow for development of a duplex off-site, which will be...
That's the PULTI that you're referring to, right?
Right, the PULTI language will go...
But the language that you sent, that we're looking at now, has to do with the Carberry property, correct?
Well, if it were, if I could see it, then I would have...
So the bylaw has a provision requiring 10% of the units to be affordable, right? And as originally drafted, it requires those units to be on the development site, correct?
No. Not correct.
All right. Well, there was discussion previously about the fact that there's language in here about a PUD containing less than 10 townhouse units. That language was stricken, because there's no discussion about a development of less than 10 units. And then... There's provision for the onsite units to be age-restricted, because the development is an age-restricted development, but that the off-site units would not necessarily need to be age-restricted. That was what's in the marked-up version that preceded the handout that was sent out.
But this, you're quite right, that I was, this number four is what I'm thinking we're going to need in PULTI, but it's here, so we don't need it again here.
So the question, I think, that we talked about last time, is whether there'd be an opportunity for a monetary contribution for at least some percentage of the required affordable units, rather than having them delivered onsite or off-site. And that had to do with timing also of the delivery of off-site locations. I didn't see an off, monetary contribution in the language that was distributed, so I was wondering if we were going to have that conversation again.
So, I think, to just clarify what you're saying there, the where we were is that we had a discussion between whether there would be six additional units onsite, and whether those units would be within the 58, or if that would bring the unit count up to 64. We also were allowing for units off-site, which would allow them to keep the unit count to 58, and not have this need for 64 units to accommodate the affordable housing. And then, there was a discussion at the last meeting, which was not a hearing, about incorporating in a financial incentive as a way to mitigate the need for those 64 units and cap total unit count at 58. So, what we're asking, what you're asking about now is what's that, where is the language for that contribution? And I don't think it exists yet, and I think that would be something that we'd be bringing potentially to that next, that next conversation.
The developer has indicated that they would like a fail-safe monetary contribution provision, and I think that that can be done, but it hasn't been done. And it will be something that we'll have at the next meeting.
Great.
I did see that you had some language similar, or addressing that for the PULTI property that was in the, perhaps in the special permit. So would that be similar, do you think, Alex?
It would be somewhat similar, but PULTI is a different situation.
Okay.
Okay, so for the public, we'll be considering that piece of the language at our 23rd hearing, but we would love to hear your comments on it this evening as well. hearing, but we would love to hear your comments on it this evening as well. Cheryl, do you have anything else? Section 10? Or anybody, for that matter, sorry, not to direct that just to Cheryl. But Cheryl, you can explain what changes you made, if they're substantive.
We have had feedback that the Woodmere Development has a strong garage door dominance in the, in the visual character. We had suggested that we wanted to try and avoid that in the future, so this is language here has to do with, that we didn't want that kind of dominance. So, it's not telling them exactly how to do it, but it's saying that we don't want that to be the, the character.
Cheryl, what section are you in?
That was 10.
The next section has been open, is open land, and we've had a substantial amount of discussion on open land with this, this application, as well as the PULTI language. And I think we were going to look at the PULTI language and vice versa, look at this language for PULTI, and see where we needed, where there was good language that we could draw from, from both. I don't know that there's any further changes from what you've done here, Cheryl, or if anybody has any recommendations to bring to the table, as further changes are brought for the 23rd.
I think where the plan and where a suggestion had been made by a member of the public about an opportunity for a walking path, since there's no sidewalk along Canton Ave, this section of Canton Ave, that that open space would be allowed to have that, that walking path, that was added. I think the intent is to have as little change in that no disturbance zone as possible, with the exception of maintenance in this path.
Yep.
In that section. That's a good, good suggestion, yeah.
Okay, just moving through more, keep, keep going, because we're going to get to the public, and then we can finish up our conversation for tonight. Anything on condominium association? Those were mostly minor changes, I think. Design standard, we had a fair amount of changes for. Anything that you need to highlight, Cheryl?
Just that we added language so that we could encourage certain character in the architecture, and prohibited a couple of the materials, again, trying to set some design standards.
And how about on the site plan? Anything that you want to note that you changed, or anybody else wants to note that we changed on the site plan language?
Well, this is what would be submitted to us. I added additional information that we'd like to see in what is required to be submitted to us, being more explicit about what the existing conditions requirements, and having to show topography, existing and proposed, indicating where there would be cut and fill, where there would be limits to construction, and any disturbance, so that we can see what impact is proposed in terms of tree loss, et cetera. And in terms of getting a quality site plan that meets the, the context of that natural landscape, since there's a lot of topography and natural features, I've put in a three-dimensional model of the parcel, including those things. I think that's extremely important to help us get to a, a plan that will have, that will fit into that context and not look out of character. I also have suggested that photographic documentation of the existing conditions be submitted, both of the historic structures and the historic landscapes, so that we have documentation of it before construction. On limits of construction plan, I think that's really important, too. We want to make sure that we don't have areas, too many areas that are expanded beyond what is necessary in terms of impact. And a construction management and construction phasing plan. In B, under the site plan design standards, some, I think there was some question about what was meant by this language. The existing topography, our regs ask for respect to the existing topography without a lot of change. So, the kind of change that could happen would be a lot of cutting, and so that's removal of soil and filling, which is moving the soil to another location. Want to limit how much of that there is. There's a cost to taking soil that you cut off-site someplace, so what I was trying to say is that getting a balance of cut and fill should not be the design objective. The design objective should be a good site plan and a, and a development which fits into the natural topography as best as possible.
So, I think we had discussed a reference to the existing natural topography to help clarify that language.
And then, and then adding here, this, the use of retaining walls to manage topographic modifications should be limited. That's the same idea. So, these both are trying to get at, you're going to have a site plan that is respectful of the existing topography as much as possible.
I have those plans that I'm not going to rate, but a grading plan, a landscaping plan and language about it, and the limits of construction and sighting plan, and I have that language and will provide it.
Okay, thank you. We also, just for the, for the public, in case they were not able to see this document, other filing requirements include a traffic impact study, which the planning board will use to determine at its discretion, at its discretion, whether mitigation measures may be required, and a tree study that will identify all significant trees of 10 inches in diameter or greater. And we can determine, as the planning board at our discretion, whether replacement trees shall be required to offset any impact from loss of trees. The rest of the language is fairly standard special permit language. So, you can speak when we go to the public. If you don't mind, you can go first. Yep.
Groupings, I think it was.
Yep. Okay, is anything from the, any other member of the planning board, before I move the discussion to the public? April? Mike?
Just that we, we had talked about the cut and fill not exceeding three feet, either three-foot cut or a three-foot fill, to help maintain the existing topography.
Great, I didn't have that note, thank you. Okay, we're going to open this up to the public. If you'd like to speak on this matter, you can raise your hand to be recognized, and we'll get through as many, it'll get through everybody, so just be patient with us. Yes, sir, please come forward.
Good evening, Chairman Fers and members of the planning board. My name is Hale Smith. I live at 1632 Canton Avenue. I am a butler to the Carberry Woolcott property, and I would like to read into the record, record this evening, a letter that was sent to Chairman Fers yesterday. It's from the Blue Hill Neighborhood Association, addressed to Brian, Mr. Brian Fers, Chair, Milton Planning Board Town Office Building, regarding the Carberry Woolcott Estate zoning proposal. Dear Mr. Chairman Fers and Planning Board members, officers and members of the Blue Hill Neighborhood Association have spent considerable time analyzing information relevant to the Carberry Woolcott development. Public records show that Northland Residential Corporation purchased 19.2 acres last fall for 4.75 million. Mr. Dolly reported further that it holds an option on the remaining 28 acres exercisable after town meeting, in that his agreement with the seller provides a price range based on the number of units approved. On June 16th, Northland presented a concept plan containing 64 units to neighbors. Northland claims that it needs 58 market-priced units, excluding the six affordable units, to reach desired profitability. To date, Northland has not provided any evidence that a 44-unit townhouse development favored by the Blue Hill Neighborhood Association would be less profitable than a 40B affordable housing development. Based on monies paid to date, its prorata land cost for 64 units is only $182 per unit. On a similar prorata basis, a 44-unit development translates to land costs of $264,000 per unit, still a reasonable price in the town of Milton. After months of meeting with Northland, the planning board, selectmen, and each other, Blue Hill Neighborhood Association has come to terms with the fact that development will be built on the pristine Woolcott, Carberry Woolcott property, but is steadfast in believing that 44-unit townhouse development would be far more desirable than a 58-unit one. We believe the great estate plan unit development zoning density should be limited to 44 units, twice the underlying double-A zoning. The Blue Hill Neighborhood Association asks that the Milton Planning Board back our efforts to protect the historic Carberry Woolcott Estate, seen at Canton Avenue, and the contiguous Blue Hill Reservation. Should the board not accept our stance on the 44 unit, we would request that it withhold a formal position on the great estate plan unit zoning amendment until the May town meeting. Thank you for your time and consideration of this important town matter. This is signed by the officers of the Blue Hill Neighborhood Association. Can I take any questions, or?
Okay, thank you, I think we're all set.
Okay. Would you like copies of this?
And I believe that that letter was circulated in advance of the meeting.
It was, it was a...
I just wanted to let you know.
...small typo in the second paragraph, but I'll circulate these. Thank you.
Okay, would anyone else like to speak, please? Mr. Connors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kirk Connors, representing the Walker family at 1776 Canton Road. I did want to add to what Mr. Smith said, that my client has also publicly stated at his last appearance before the planning board, that he would support 44 units despite all the opposition that we've brought forward. It's a compromise point that everyone in the neighborhood has agreed on, and I just want to second what Mr. Smith said. I did have a follow-up question for the board about the record for this hearing. As you know, I sent a letter yesterday asking that the record include all submittals, all testimonies from when this discussion first arose in April. I understand from what you said at the beginning of the meeting that you've selected January 5th as, as the date. I'm concerned that that's an arbitrary date, partly because the plan that Northland submitted, I think Mr. Corcoran would know best, was maybe back in October to the public, and I think they brought it to the board maybe in November. So, by doing it January 5th, I'm not even sure that it includes the plan that everybody's focused on here. So, if we're not going to go all the way back, I would pick a different arbitrary date, sometime maybe in October, or worst case, the very beginning of November. I know that we started submitting comments in early November, based on that plan finally being revealed in, in the 58-unit configuration.
So, the January 5th date was, is not arbitrary. The reason it was chosen was because it was the official start of this public process, which is why the date was selected. I think the concern would be any other date might be arbitrary. And so, you know, the other, the other thing I will say is, again, by not having any opportunity to close the hearing tonight, it does give an opportunity to put additional material on the record on the 23rd, if that is something that you wish to do. I know it's a tall order to do that, but I think we're, we're concerned about putting every, we don't, we, I'm worried about being arbitrary as this town council. This was a decision that was made in cooperation with town council.
Okay. I mean, I think at the end, whatever was said over the course is going to come in one way or another, but I would just respectfully submit that it's going to mean that we're, anyone who submitted anything from the Neighborhood Association on behalf of my client, attorney Chikello, I'm trying to think who else has been in front of here, will need to repackage, and if they think it's in their interest, resubmit everything we ever submitted to you before the 5th, so I guess that's what's coming.
I mean, that's, it's a, it's a challenge we dealt with this afternoon in discussions with town council. All of those materials are obviously available for public review and would be in the same location as this material would be. Again, I think I'm happy to bring to town council another date, but it would have to not be arbitrary. So, if you want to submit a date after tonight's hearing, I'm happy to bring that to town council's attention.
Okay, again, I think it would really, given that I know that Mr. Whiteside in particular said, "This is the plan that I, that I like," and I think a number of the board members have kind of come to terms on it, and kind of made Northland come forward with the bylaw finally, because they knew what plan we were talking about. So, I think they are all linked, and I will suggest right now, it's going to be sometime in October, maybe November 1st timeframe, just to try and capture everything. And I think for my purposes, that would eliminate the need for me to resubmit a bunch of materials to you that I've submitted over several months. Beyond that, I did want to say that I don't think we have any objections to Ms. DeGias' comments, as she had, I know we had talked about them in a previous meeting, we talked about them again tonight. I would just add a couple things from the comments that I had submitted on top of her comments. One was in section 11. Actually, hang on one second. I've got a bunch of different versions of the comments in front of me now. Let me make sure I've got the right one in front of me. Okay, I'm sorry, section 12, this is the condominium association language. In my comments, I added a number of clarifications where I thought we needed to make a distinction between no disturbance open land and just regular open land. And I think some examples were just that it didn't make clear that the no disturbance open land would fall under the condominium association's, you know, control and management and all those things. It was just cleanup-type edits, but I think they're important, and it's worth a look at the whole bylaw to make sure that that distinction is made everywhere it needs to be made. And the last issue was whether this was going to be septic or sewer. We did submit materials from an engineer from Beals and Thomas describing the type of septic system that he contemplates or estimates would be needed for a 58-unit development. It's substantial, it's not taken into account on the plan, and I, it seemed that when the concept of septic were last discussed, that the commission was, the board was surprised at that concept, and I, it seemed like there was some concern with it, and certainly my client has some concern with it. So, I don't know if that's a topic that the board needs to pick back up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this topic? Yes, please come forward. Ms. Swenson.
Thank you, Chairman Fers. Denny Swenson, 65 Green Street. I live nearby this neighborhood, and I'm aware that 44 or 58 units will generate quite a bit of traffic, and I wish I brought a little diagram of the area, but you know, when you come into Milton on 138, in order to go down... area, but you know, when you come into Milton on one-thirty-eight, in order to go down Brushhill Road, you have to actually go right on a one-way upper Canton Avenue, and then you have to go down in order to get down Brushhill. So where forty-four or fifty-eight units is adding quite a bit of traffic. The developer is also generating quite a bit of profit. I just want to keep some of that profit for the area to just sort of mitigate the traffic issues. I think it would probably require some creative solutions, because it's a very tricky area. You can't necessarily widen that road. There's been discussion about traffic lights and so on. It might need some more help, perhaps even walking paths over one-thirty-eight or bike paths, or just something like that, some sort of a bridge almost. And so that was just one of the things that I thought of as I was looking at the plan tonight. So I'm also the president of the Friends of Blue Hills, and I know that during the master plan meetings, it was one of the things that a lot of the townspeople were asking for was foot, bike, walking access to the Blue Hills, and this is a real juggernaut in the way of getting to the Blue Hills. So anything we can do to improve this area, and if we can't get people there walking or biking, we need the cars to get through, so thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this?
Good evening. Thank you. Anthony Chikello. I'm here tonight as an attorney for Jack Weeks, who's a neighbor and a butler to the Carberry property. He's at the bottom of Carberry Lane, right adjacent to the property. On behalf of Mr. Weeks, he would recommend that you move this bylaw forward. I think the concerns with this project are legion. Everyone, I think, except maybe Mr. Dolly, as I've said, would prefer that this property not be developed, but I think everyone has come to the conclusion that it is going to be developed, and there's going to be some sort of substantial development there. The as-of-right zoning, two-acre zoning, I think, I know of one person who thinks that that would be the best use for that site. Everyone else that I've talked to thinks that would be a travesty. It's a beautiful property with great viewscapes into the Blue Hills and meadows and that type of thing, and it's a real resource. I think the goal here for my client and a number of the other folks that I have talked to is to have a manageable development there and to minimize impacts, both aesthetic and otherwise, on the neighbors and for the town. I think that this plan is a workable one that can be moved forward. There's a lot of work to be done. As you know, I've been in front of this board and others advocating for a development agreement in conjunction with this project to really spell out in a lot more specific detail some of the things that are, that a zoning article is less amenable to do. I would urge that that happen and that the planning board provide some sort of assistance and input into that process as we move forward. I know there's some, that's an unprecedented thing in our town, it hasn't been done before, and I know some people have, in some ways, principled objections to that kind of approach, but I think that we're dealing with the practicalities of a proposal that's underway, and I think the best way to manage the risks for the neighbors and the town is to engage in that process. And the goals of that development agreement and moving it forward would be really, to the extent that we can at this stage, get as much clarity as possible, get accountability for the developer. The developer's made promises, indicated that he's willing to be held to those promises, so let's do that. And we also want a mechanism for enforceability, and I think a development agreement can provide that. I think this bylaw, as it's moving forward here and evolving, is a workable one. Everyone would love fewer units, but right now, there's been some speculation about a potential buy-down that hasn't surfaced. Right now, wishing it were less doesn't necessarily make it so and doesn't make it realistic. So if there is an opportunity to reduce it, I would hope it would happen soon with some sort of buy-down or issue. Otherwise, I would, on behalf of my client, request that you move this bylaw forward. There are a lot of the tweaks and the issues that you've all been talking about here that will need to happen. I think a lot can happen in a development agreement to make it a better situation for the neighbors in the town, but I'd ask you to move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this?
Chairman and planning board members, I am Jack Dolly from Northland Residential. I'm going to go back to the boring, pedantic word smithing. I did sort of redline a document and circulated it a couple of weeks, tried to do so to spring off some of the comments that everyone has been making. I'm going to try to highlight a few and ask whoever is maybe redrafting the next version to at least give some consideration to them, because I think they go to reinforce all that what I've heard wants to be baked into this document. For instance, in Article One, where there is mention of open space, I think it should be right at the top of the document that open space is identified, that it is to be preserved from residential or commercial development in perpetuity by a deed restriction, private enforceable land use covenant, or conservation restriction, or some vehicle enforceable by the planning board. Again, this is a little bit pedantic. I think one of Attorney Connors' comments under purpose was to have a diversity of housing type in the district, but that that diversity is architecturally compatible with existing development patterns within the district and not wholesally different. I think that is a desire that the neighborhood, that I've heard from the neighborhood. These aren't to usurp anyone else's comments, these are to reinforce them. I did pluck out of another bylaw that I saw some other language relative to purpose that, you know, might be looked at. It sort of is just a different way of saying a lot of what Alex has already put in here, but it might provide a little more substantive information. On citing, one of the third bullet talks about historic lands, I sort of reinforced that, historically significant structures and land use patterns and/or features defined, you know, I use the words by the Milton Historic Commission. Maybe you don't need it defined by, but this property has historic, not only buildings, but land use characteristics, and I think that's important when we're talking. And I'm using it in the context of not just this property, but maybe other properties that might fit within the brackets of this. A little words here and there for, instead of townhouse, I put residential setbacks under Section Seven. I sort of amplified it. In order to mitigate the impact of a great estate PUD on surrounding neighborhoods, a proposed project must be located and designed in conformity with the following requirements, and then there's a series of bullets, one of which was Ms. Taguyas', that there is no development in the first seventy-five, there's a minimum amount of development in the first five-hundred-and-fifty. I think all of that can be, if you will, tightened up, and I agree with the tightening up of it. And in particular, the placement of structures we talked about last week, like in the manor house lawn or within two-hundred-and-fifty, I think. I'd like to suggest that Ned or I assist us all in trying to put that to words, so it's enforceable. Under affordable housing, I would ask the scribe to look at my comment boxes. For instance, you know, should there be a minimum number of units on-site in any event? One of the principles of affordable housing is to distribute them throughout town. You know, should there be in a bylaw, the optionality to build them on-site, to build them off-site, the payment in lieu, or should there be some sort of threshold that, you know, in no event shall there be less than, whether it's a number or a ratio? There's also been a fair amount of talk about whether or not age-restricted affordable units are good or bad. I've seen in my career a way where those are parsed out. Again, you have a ratio that some can be and some can't be, to provide, again, some optionality and some, an opportunity to serve different inclusionary housing populations, both either on-site or off-site. That was a comment. Open land, I think there needs to be a minimum open space. Parcel size, I don't recall whether that was in there. Had a fair amount of edits in there, again, trying to reinforce the notion that open land is to remain open land in perpetuity. It is not, it is to be prohibited from clearcutting, but at the same time, it might permit a trail, it might permit, for instance, we have some open lands that have been mowed. They're fields, they're agricultural fields in the manor house lawn. If we say they're no touch, is that what we want to say? So there's certain areas that we, I think, they're part of the scenery of Canton Ave and the beauty of the property, there probably ought to be a right, a limited right, to maintain those areas in that character, if that character, whether it be an open parcel, open field area, or a wooded, you know, if it's wooded, it stays wooded. If it's a field, maybe it could be mowed. I provided, again, a separate document about open land. You know, it talked about its U-shaped location, you know, common open space should be undisturbed, unaltered, left in its natural state. It shall be contiguous and linked as a unit and not a bunch of little pocket parks, functional for wildlife habitat, passive recreation, resource preservation, agriculture. I mean, I'm plagiarizing from other documents, but they might be sort of instructive or illustrative of what we're trying to accomplish here. So again, I won't bore the audience or the board with that, but I would, I can either resubmit or I can just point you back to some of those as whoever drafts, drafts. Thank you.
Thank you. And we do have, I have a copy of those in front of me, hopefully. If you need one, I know we have those, so it's up on the wall. Tim can give it to whoever needs it for redrafting purposes. Okay, is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this? Okay, I'm going to ask one more time, just because I missed it one last time. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this? Okay, thank you. All right, so a couple of quick questions for the board that I would like to just think about as we're going into our next meeting, and if you have any thoughts on it tonight. One is, one relates to the unit count. If anybody has anything they want to mention on unit count tonight before we go back into a redrafting phase. Another would be on the affordable housing that was mentioned and the financial contribution, and the third would be if there's a pleasure with the board regarding the septic versus sewer, which came up tonight. And then obviously, I'll open it up for any other comments or questions by the board.
I just think regarding the septic or the sewer, it's hard to understand how they're going to accomplish the open space, without disturbing land to develop the septic system. So I'd be in preference to see a public sewerage.
So is that something that we should, in your opinion, we should put in as a condition or put into the zoning, or is that something that we should craft language so that if there is, if there's the ability to the septic system without that type of disturbance, that's their option, but that the language restricts certain impacts to the land, I guess, in doing so?
Yeah, we should restrict certain impacts and certainly maintain the sixty percent open space.
Yep, okay, so let's make sure we're thinking about that. Let's make sure we're thinking about that.
I would agree with that.
Anything else?
On the topic, on the topic of affordable housing, my strong preference would be the creation of units as opposed to the payment in lieu of, but I don't necessarily object to off-site unit creation. I think that would be fine, although I didn't, I thought Mr. Dolly's suggestion tonight that there be some sort of a mix of some on-site creation, I believe is what you were suggesting, that there could be a number of units on-site and also off-site, and the off-site potentially would be not age-restricted, which I think would be desirable, but I would like to see the creation of units as opposed to a payment.
On the affordable housing, I think I like the idea of a mix of the way it's provided. I do support at least some percentage of it being in a contribution, not all of it.
The only problem I see with trying to develop some on-site is they've stressed all along that the fifty-eight units is, doesn't include affordable. Right now, I think the fifty-eight units is high, so I don't, you know, it seems to me it'd be nice to see a number somewheres, you know, a compromise somewheres between the forty-four and the fifty-eight, but to try to do the affordable on-site and then increase the fifty-eight is just, I don't know, I don't see that as something that I'd accept.
Any other comment from the public? Forward.
I'd just clarify that. I think, and I just spoke with Jack, the notion of providing some affordables on-site would increase the number over sixty, over fifty-eight. Fifty-eight market rate units on the site is the bogey, and the notion of producing off-site is important. We are open to the notion of a failsafe provision because there is some risk with respect to finding and producing six off-site. We're fairly confident that by town meeting, we'll have a better sense of where we are, and we may be, have the ability to adjust to eliminate the failsafe provision and just provide on-site, or excuse me, off-site units. But at this point, that risk is still a difficult issue to manage, and so if the pleasure of the board is to cap it at fifty-eight, then we would need a failsafe payment provision within the draft of the bylaw to go forward.
So to April, to that end, because I, obviously, I think I've made it clear, I agree with you that units are better than money, because the town has not proven, most towns have not proven to be very good developers, that's not pejorative against Milton. The financial failsafe should be unappealing.
I'd like to just re-
It's unappealing to me. I mean, I'd like to feel-
I mean for the developer, so it should be-
Oh, yes, 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 I understand that. I still do feel as though we have zero record of producing any units with any payment in lieu of, probably because we've never had one, but I still don't have confidence in our ability to do that, so that's why I would have a preference for the unit creation. However, I understand your point, and I'm willing to be open-minded about it. I'm very interested in Cheryl's comments, though, in understanding a little bit more about why you're interested in some portion of a payment in lieu of.
Well, we have a number of projects where we're looking at the possibility of a contribution. I don't think it needs to be, I mentioned this at our last meeting, but given the fact that we're having this conversation, you know, I'll basically repeat myself, but I do-
Just one point about that, the video isn't online, so I wasn't able to see it. So I appreciate your-
Yeah, it's just that in other communities, the monies are also used to help subsidize a development that would, let's say, have ten percent required, but they might go to twenty, twenty-five percent, thirty percent, and a contribution from this fund could help them get to that threshold. So it's not like we're, we don't have to necessarily use those funds to produce them ourselves, but we make a contribution. And I think there is opportunity for that with the potential. Bill has mentioned to me that there is the possibility of such development in town. So I just want people to understand that it wouldn't be just an opportunity to have it sink someplace, but I do- But I do strongly believe that not all of the requirement here should come in a monetary contribution.
So, thank you. With that explanation, I do, I would be open-minded about that.
I'd just like to understand and clarify something. If I understood Mr. Smith earlier that a portion of the land has been purchased with an agreement that the remainder of the land would be negotiated relative to the amount of units that would be developed, would that, if that understanding is correct, I'm confused why the 58 units is so written in stone.
Yes, Mr. Smith's understanding isn't correct. So, a portion of the property has been purchased, there's a purchase price associated with the purchase of the balance. 58 year market rate units is the number of units that need to be developed, period. Unless a guardian angel shows up and buys down the unit count.
So the, so the remaining portion of the land, the price has already been agreed upon?
Yeah. It's, I can't make that any clearer. 58 units, market rate units, is the bogey.
So this, this land is to be purchased by Northland-
Correct.
Regardless of whether this bylaw passes or not for a fixed price?
No, if, if the bylaw doesn't pass, he can decide whether he purchases the balance or not. The likelihood is he'll purchase the balance and produce a 40B development. Or it'll revert back to the Carbury's and they'll sell it to somebody who likely will produce a 40B development.
And Northland will still remain the owner of these 19 acres?
Or could sell it to the guy who buys next door, or, you know, the options are, right now, Northland is the only developer that can produce this project in accordance with this bylaw. Need all of the property to do that development. His plan is to buy it and produce this development. His plan is to buy it and produce something else if this bylaw doesn't pass. 58 market rate units is the minimum number of units that will be developed on this site unless the guardian angel shows up and buys down the unit count. We've been consistent.
One minute, I'm gonna recognize Mr. Smith in just a moment. I just want to go back to the affordable housing just for a second, so we can close off that portion of discussions, for now, anyway. The, I think what I was mentioning by making it unappealing to the developer and now tying together what Cheryl and you were discussing, it would be interesting to consider a sliding scale contribution, meaning you get, you can contribute a certain amount for the first unit, but the sixth unit would be far more expensive, so it'd be an interesting way to conceptualize that. Mr. Smith, you can be recognized. I am gonna just note, however, that we're not going to get into a debate about the purchasing conditions of this tonight.
I felt compelled to come back to this table just to rebut Mr. Corcoran's comments. The, I have no doubt that Northland's goal is to maximize their profit on this development. That's what any developer would seek to do. I also believe it's not the responsibility of the neighborhood or the town, or any board in the town, to assist Northland in that goal. Mr. Corcoran, Mr. Dolly did tell me that the ultimate price they pay for the properties based on the number of units that get approved in a town meeting. Now, they've been very consistent in saying they have to get 58, but that's totally inconsistent with what, what I was told probably four months ago. I think the board should consider the fact that there is a possibility, a very real possibility, with support from this board to get a better deal for the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anything else from the board?
Actually, I would like to make a comment. I think Mr. Dolly made a couple of suggestions that actually, I think, strengthens the bylaw and strengthens the town's position. I just want to thank you for that, particularly the linkages of the open space, so you don't wind up with pocket parks. And I thought he made a number of thoughtful comments and I appreciate them very much.
Great, thanks. Okay, so before we continue this, I just want to quickly check availability on the 23rd, because I know it's school vacation week.
I'm out of state.
Can you call in?
Do I need my computer for that? Do I have to be live, or is it just phone?
We can do it with just phone, for sure. We can also set up a WebEx if you want, but we can do it with a phone and you'll have your packet in front of you.
Okay, I mean, I'm just not sure about internet service where I will be, but I can certainly have my phone.
Okay. So, anyone else?
I'm available.
Okay.
I'm available.
Great, Mike? All right, so can I have a motion to continue this until, yes, staff, sure? Tim, you're recognized.
For the purposes of, and I'm sorry, I'm kind of split between two worlds over here. In terms of the actual physical document, I'd like to be able to clean, I mean, you're looking at Mr. Dolly's comments on Cheryl's comments right now, which also include Alex's initial edits of the initial bylaw. I'd like to be able to clean this up a little bit so that people are looking at something that is comprehensible and we're not dealing with a sort of slippery set of whose edits are good or whose edits are bad. So in terms of, you know, the comments that Cheryl had made, can we accept those and move on, or do we want to leave this with everyone's edits in it?
I think there were some edits suggested by Mr. Dolly and Mr. Connors that we'd want to consider before we just accept the ones that I had put in.
And Alex has comments to put in as well. I think it's gonna continue to be a colorful document.
Okeydoke.
Okay, so can I have a motion to continue to February 23rd? Tim, do we have anything else that night? We do not, correct? At 7:05?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're now moving on to the, I'm just looking for the formal name here, sorry. Thank you. Parkway Planned Unit Development, otherwise known as the Blue Hill Ice or Ice House Project, depending on who you're speaking to at any given moment. Give the board a minute to just get their papers. Okay, so I'm gonna just, for the record, say what I said last time for the previous hearing. We submitted on January 5th a bylaw for consideration on the warrant to the Board of Selectmen for this property and have since had several public meetings, not hearings, at which the public participated. As such, we will incorporate any verbal testimony and any material submitted to the board and submitted to the record into this hearing, starting with the January 5th meeting. I think I'm gonna look to Alex this time for where you think we should go based on, this one's a little less clear to me as to where we are.
If you don't mind me interjecting for a second, there is a copy of my edits in this packet. There's not many, but I'm just bringing it to your attention.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we, what's on the, on the agenda for hearing is what we submitted in early January. And since then, there have been a number of, number of revisions, proposed revisions, the latest of which Mr. Corcoran sent a couple of days ago, I think. And I've reviewed that. And I actually have reviewed all the revisions. It just seems to me that people know what it's about and-
Agree.
We should hear what they have to say about it.
Okay, just quickly, I agree with you, just quickly on the discrepancy between where all of the different permutations have brought us to date and the original submission, which was for development of a well-designed food market between 10, 14,000 square feet, including or associated with a coffee shop and certain other businesses and a lot with current and past businesses' use, to permit development of five to 12 well-designed units of housing on the lot, development of adequate parking, and to ensure that all development is sited in a park-like setting. Outside of the configuration of those units, massing-wise, I think all were really, from a residential perspective, were somewhere around 12 units. Is that correct?
Yeah, Mr. Corcoran suggests 12 units.
Okay.
And a FAR of .4 or possible total of 35,000 square feet or so. And parking for the market, one per, or five per 1,000 square feet. And then one or one and a half spaces for the residential units without a provision of guest parking, just straight parking. And there is an issue on the market building, which can be, I think, 16,000 square feet, or maybe only 14, but in any event, it can have a second floor, so it could be quite a big building.
So it seems like it's configuration more than number of units, though, correct?
Well-
Meaning is it one building or two buildings?
The number of units, if with, with, you wouldn't have a second floor with only six units.
Right, I agree with that. We had a bonus provision in the one that you created, essentially, right? Okay. Okay. We're going to the public.
Can I make a comment before we hear from the public? I don't know if this mic is working, but we've had a lot of discussion about a market as the potential for the commercial element of the mixed-use development. And I'm not foreclosing that opportunity, but I do have questions about whether or not a market will ultimately be feasible, given the amount of state permitting that's required, the amount of infrastructure that would be required as an investment to make that happen. We've heard from the applicants that, or from the property owner, that a full-service lighted intersection would have to be installed, which could be incredibly expensive. So what I would like to hear, particularly from the supporters, but even from people that object to this proposal, is if the market, the grocery store element is the piece that you support exclusively, because that's the way the zoning is written now, that this would, must require a market, a grocery store. Or is there flexibility in your thinking so that the zoning could be written, and I must say that none of my board members have warmed to this idea, but I want to hear from the public, is there any thinking about smaller-scale retail bays, two or three small retail units, as opposed to a grocery store, if the grocery store didn't come to fruition for one reason or another? And I'm not sure that was abundantly clear, but I guess the question is, is it only the grocery store that people who support this project want to see, or are there other potential smaller-scale commercial elements that could work for you as well?
Okay. Who would like to speak to this application? Sir in the back. You have to come up here, please.
Hello. Hi, I'm Keith Schleicher, town meeting member, precinct number four. I live at 376 Blue Hills Parkway, and you've seen me a couple times before. I'm the one that started the petition that people were, we now have a close to 575 people that have said they do want the development to come through. I had some neighbors that already left because of the time, but they were going to speak for it. I think, as it's been said before, it's going to change one way or the other. I would love it to be a market where I could walk across the street and go get some food, not have to drive to, and out of town, or go to East Milton. And I just think it would be a great addition to the western side of Milton. It's something we could really use. And I, the other thing, too, is if that didn't go in, would I be open to other retail shops there? I mean, to be honest, I would love a restaurant that people could walk to in that side of town if the grocery store didn't go through. So any retail over there would be very welcomed by me and a lot of the people I've talked to in my precinct. And lastly, I wanted to thank all of the new faces that have come out and have sat for an hour and a half through something that they don't really have a lot of input in to do this meeting, members of the Milton Dive Team and all of my neighbors and supporters that have come out, and even people that maybe don't support it. It's nice to see a lot of faces get involved and I appreciate everyone's time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to this? Yes?
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Nancy Latanzio. I live at 32 Lafayette Street. To answer April's question, what's exciting about it is the thought that it would be a grocery store. It's hard to answer your question because if it wasn't a grocery store, if it was retail bays or something like that, I wouldn't know if I was for it until I knew more about what they were gonna be, so I wouldn't necessarily be for that. I think, as Keith just mentioned, the prospect of something food-related in our part of town would be a wonderful amenity. And I think it would also help with property values in our part of town, to tell you the truth. And my concern, which I've expressed, I think, at other meetings, is only about how the back of the property is handled with regard to Pope's Pond and the wooded area back there. I think it really has to be, if I had my druthers, I would prefer to see that area not be touched, not be connected to the development, and just be preserved as natural area. I know that might not be what ends up happening and I would still support the project if that wasn't what happened, but I would want to know how it was gonna be handled, because the pond is also a really nice amenity in our part of town. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name's Kate Adams. I'm from 18 Landon Road, representing the Mercy Adams family. I just wanted to second everything that the last two residents had said. I think the west side of Milton is extraordinarily underserved when it comes to commercial availability within the town. I think, to answer your question, yeah, I would definitely be interested in other smaller stores being available on the side, on that side of town. I just think, at the end of the day, when we're talking about the west side of Milton, you have to go all the way over to the other side of town to get anything, like to get a box of Band-Aids at the end of the day, right? No matter what it is, if it's a cup of coffee, an ice cream for my nine-year-old daughter, it's a ride to get over there. And I just think it's a, it's a pretty underserved section of town that could really use this space. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes?
Good evening. Can you hear me? My name is Stephen O'Keel. I'm a resident of precinct one. I'm a town meeting member from precinct one also. And I've been a member in the past of the warrant committee for about four years. I've been following the ICE House process now for quite a while. And my initial reaction to it was that I was somewhat neutral, not opposed to the initial presentation that we saw. What I'm seeing now, however, is a substantially different proposal than what was originally made in terms of density. And that is a particular concern to me. The original floor area ratio in one of the first models that I saw or presentations was 20%. It's now 40%. It's doubled. I don't think there's enough parking. I think, given the number of cars that people have, particularly in residences' days, it's not one car, it's usually two. been to the Fruit Center in East Milton Square during holiday times, or times of busy activity, you'll know that the traffic, the cars overflow the parking lot and go out. Where's that traffic going to go? Onto the bike paths, onto the parkway, and where is, I think, a major concern that I have. Animal control has been mentioned, but animal control is not just the insects and the rodents. If we're right next to the conservation land, we're also talking about coyotes, skunks, raccoons, deer, and any number of other animals that have to be taken into account. And if you walk down the parkway at all, and I do all the time, I run a walk, I see them all the time. So that would be something that has to be taken into account. And the fact that the development itself is becoming so dense is going to have an impact on those populations also. The setbacks have become smaller, there's some discussions, I understand it, that parking will be possibly put into the setbacks, so that they're really not the same setbacks that were originally proposed. So there's been a dramatic change in order to accommodate the density of the project, which I'm assuming is because it's going to take that level of density in order to provide the economic viability to make it work. That may work for the project, for the property owner, and for the developer, I don't believe that that works for the people who live in the neighborhood of the residents, or the people who use the parkway on a regular basis. Traffic continues to be a major concern. If you go out on the parkway, and you look at the speed of the vehicles, particularly vehicles passing on the right-hand side, who totally ignore the bike paths already, it's an issue, and it's going to have to be resolved, and this is going to, of course, add to that, and I think special provision would have to be made to accommodate for that. If we have the circumstances where parking expands beyond the parking inside the actual development, onto the parkway, it's going to make the situation actually even worse. So those are things that really need to be considered. In the initial proposal, a café was one of the more important elements, I think, that was of concern to people in the community, a place that they could go and sit down and have a cup of coffee and do something. It's gotten to the place now that the café is almost, almost seems like an afterthought, and other items that were originally proposed, in terms of public restrooms and public meeting space, no longer exist. A concern that I have is, since those activities and provisions were put into the original proposal, and now we have a diametrically, we have a very different proposal in front of us, we have, we may have people out there who still believe what they're getting, or what they're hearing about, is the original proposal, when in fact, what is being discussed is something very different. Just one or two more, and I'm done. I guess I would finally say that development of this density is not in the best interest of the neighborhood, the residents, or the people who use the parkway. There is no other road like the parkway in Milton, if you stop and think about it. There is no other road that has a whole parkway in the middle, not Brook Road, not Central Ave, not any of those places, it's a real gem. People use it all the time for jogging, for walking, for doing many different activities. This is going to have a dramatic impact on the actual parkway itself, and once it's done, once we give it away, we're not going to be able to get it back. So I think we've taken something that was much less dense, made it, so dense to the point where I don't think it's a good fit anymore. I think that's a major concern. I would urge you to think about that.
Thank you. Oh, a whole bunch of people over here, so we'll start with the front. Start with you, sir, yeah. If you want, if you want to speak next, if you want to just come up and sit like we do at town meeting, that would be fine. Just kind of line up up here, that'd be great.
Hi, Paul Donovan, 360 Blue Hills Parkway. I was kind of hoping someone a little more articulate than me would get up to talk about this, because I, you know, I'm a long-term resident, almost forty years, on the parkway. I still have the concerns I had several months ago, and I've been listening and looking at your proposals, and I'm still very much concerned about the density. I think we're trying to shoehorn something in, we're taking a presupposed idea that we need a supermarket, we're trying to find a way to squeeze that in. It just, I just don't see how it's going to work, and I think that having something like the Milton Food Market in that neighborhood will be a disaster. We already know what the traffic is like in East Milton Square. We couldn't put something like that on Route 28, in the old yards that were available on the main road. We haven't been able to put something like that in other commercial areas in town, and now we're trying to squeeze it into a residential neighborhood, where I feel it just doesn't fit, and it's going to cause a lot of problems. We have two schools on that street, we have two convenience stores within that area, we have three or four supermarkets within five miles of that area that you can't get to if you just, will go outside of Milton. So a supermarket itself is not a necessity. I would love the idea of something smaller in scale, Milton Country Store kind of thing. I think that's what people are looking at. Maybe a couple of small offices, doctors' offices, something scalable, something that wouldn't add a lot of traffic, but would give us a little more convenience in the neighborhood. But I don't want to see the zoning changed to the point where some of the local merchants, like the small food store at the end of the street, or the convenience store we have in the neighborhood, would be put out of business, for the sake of someone who wants to put in a higher volume, more expensive upscale supermarket, that's going to destroy the investment those people have made in the neighborhood. And I'm also very concerned about the children in the neighborhood, the traffic, changing the parkway to put those lights in. There was a very good article in the Milton Paper today, someone thanking the town for putting the lights in, and the market at the end of Blue Hills Parkway, and making the parkway better and nicer, and what we're going to end up doing is taking that benefit and destroying a very important part of town. I'm old enough, unfortunately, to remember when we had a farm at the end of the street, which got replaced with a beautiful new area. We put in senior housing in the area, we put in ramps that will go into the high school that feed into the parkway. You're talking about adding traffic to the end of the parkway at Canton Ave, which will go through no matter what happens. Now we're talking about adding seven or eight hundred cars a day, plus trucks, and other things to that neighborhood. It just, to me, if it didn't make sense to put this in on Route 28, if it doesn't make sense to put it in the commercial areas in town, it just doesn't make sense to do it in this residential area. And the whole idea of changing the residential zoning to do something like this is a dangerous precedent. Anyway, that's how, and I've talked to some people in town that don't go to the meetings, and unfortunately, they all think this is something that's in the bag, so they're not bothering to talk about it, and I tried to say that's not been the case. We don't want people to feel that way, either. And if we want to be the town that brags about being in Money Magazine, and being on Chronicle, and being the place to live, we have to live up to that.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the planning board. I'm Jeff Stone, I'm a town meeting member from precinct one. I'm also co-founder and co-chair of the Pope's Pond Neighborhood Association, which has about ninety-five households in the area, registered with it by email. I'm not speaking for the Neighborhood Association, I'm speaking for myself, but I can also speak for my former co-chair, Rika Marsh, who retired and moved out of state recently with her husband, but she was also in favor of this development in principle. I share the last gentleman's concern about size, I think that's very important, the word density, you know, how large it is. I'm not that familiar now with the change that was referred to from an earlier proposal to current proposal, but what I want to say is that I am firmly in favor of this kind of development with a café, with a moderate, small or a moderate-sized market, not a supermarket, there's a difference, for the convenience of area residents as an amenity, a place to shop. We are not well-served by Tedeschi's Way down on Houston Ave, or Milton Food Mart way, way down towards Mattapan Square, not where I live. I live on Luffberry Street, which is just above Pope's Pond, off Lafayette Street near where Ms. Latanzio lives. I have lived in this area for over fifty years, I have walked my loop around, passing by what's the Ice House, it was Rugo Architects' home for many years, I remember the Architects' Triangle, or Square, or whatever that is, that was in the big tree in front, I'd see that all the time as I walked by and bicycled by, so I've used this, I care about this land. The Neighborhood Association, five, six years ago, two, three years in a row, we did major cleanups on Milton Green Day in May. We picked out, we pulled out hundreds of pounds of trash, tires, iron, a full-size sofa, all kinds of trash, and so much so, that in subsequent years, there was not that much to pull out anymore. So I'm just trying to make the point that I do care about this area, I use it, I'm familiar with it, I've been using it for decades. I don't think, yes, density, you know, size is critical, okay? So I trust that we, the planning board, the residents, the town, the selectmen, the town meeting, will limit this, and the developers, and the proposal to a reasonable size. Again, I apologize for not knowing how it's changed, so I want it to be of a reasonable size. I do not think that the parkway, beautiful as it is, the amenity that Blue Hills Parkway is, I do not think it will be adversely affected by a mixed commercial development of the type we have been talking about, in the location we have been talking about. I think we can deal with that adequately. The parkway will still be a beautiful, signature road of the town of Milton, with a wonderful grassy strip with trees, and yes, there'll be some more traffic, but I want to make reference to just a couple of previous proposals over the years, where people were afraid, and turned out to be positive developments. Lowe's Circle, I know we're moving away a total residential area, the old Lowe's Estate. I remember so well, I think there are twenty-seven or twenty-five homes there in that circle, I remember so much fear that traffic will be all tied up on Brush Hill Road if we develop Lowe's Circle. There's no traffic, I drive by there almost every day, I know you live near there, Brian. It is not a traffic jam at Lowe's Circle, it was just overblown fear. Not, everybody doesn't, you know, synchronize watches and come out at the same time from Lowe's Circle in the morning or in the evening. Second thing is the Iron Footbridge, the Iron Footbridge at the mouth of Pope's Pond. I remember when you could walk over the old Iron Footbridge decades and decades ago, and then it became unsafe, and it had to be pulled out, and there was no footbridge. So you couldn't go through that way. Now, that was a, kids, you know, brought cases of beer, and there were, you know, dozen, dozens of beer cans, it was very sad, you'd go down there, and that was due to the lack of traffic, okay? There was some opposition to the new footbridge coming in, but then it was built, this beautiful wood footbridge, and that cleared up pretty much the issue of all the beer drinking, I mean, probably still happened to some degree. The more traffic, the better. I remember Marion McHethrick was a regular jogger there, once the, I used to see her there, as I'd jog or walk by, I'd see Marion jogging through there. So that was another case where people in proximity to the area thought something, a development would, you know, downgrade the beauty of the area, and yet it upgraded it. So I think, I think in closing, that this will be an amenity that will bring new attention and caring from residents and others alike to this area of the parkway. Some of the homes along the parkway have not been kept up as the way I would like to see them kept up. I feel that a well-planned, well-zoned, well-developed development will actually be an upgrade for the parkway. I think it will be for people like me who live near, and for people who live along the parkway. That's my feeling, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Joe Meduno, 248 Blue Hills Parkway. I'm also a member of the Pine Tree Brook Association and Pope's Pond Group. You know, we've been talking about this for a year, and we have before us an article that's, you know, well-intentioned, but not much different than the one we started with. In fact, this one is calling for something bigger and denser, and raises many unanswered questions, and unknown potential impacts on the parkway and its local neighborhoods. We have no impact or traffic studies, we have no developer or any real economic analysis here. The realities and logistics of the relatively small site have proven, and I think this was pretty clear in the last few meetings, which were very interesting, that the commercial development is not financially or economically doable without density. My question really to the planning board, and it's kind of an answer, I guess, in a way to April, is, is it time to keep the existing zoning with its exceptions, and create more general zoning, setting clear parameters, but allowing developers to come forward with creative options that we, as a community, and you, as a planning board, can consider and dismiss? I think we have choices, and I think there are possibilities there. I have been, from the beginning, against a large, busy, eight in the morning till eight at night, seven days a week, fruit center-like market, with housing above it or large residential housing beside it. I think it's incongruous with the historic and green setting of the parkway, and I think it's a threat to the conservation land and to the sense of place we have in this part of Milton. I know there are needs, I have needs too for a market in these things, and I think it's, there are good ideas, but I think it's either a reality that can work economically or it can't, and I was under the assumption that we're at the point of kind of understanding that it's just not going to work unless we have something kind of really out-of-scale, ugly, and I'm against any changes at all to the physical infrastructure of the parkway. I think, not only aesthetically, but I think it will become a traffic nightmare on the side streets. And if you put this development in the context of the other developments going on, in the Canton Street stretch that we've been talking about here, and the poor, the old poor farm, I think we have to kind of consider the larger traffic flow on Unquity Road as well, and on Canton Ave, which is basically a country road that you can barely drive or walk on now. So I think all those things have to be considered. So that would be my point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Julie Shields, I'm a resident of on Crown Street, I'm also a precinct one town meeting member, and I, my comments echo Mr. Stone's comments, I have very similar concerns to many people who came up here, but my concerns are, I think, are very much concerns that can be considered in well-planned development. I think that this is a good idea, I think it's a good idea for our neighborhood, but I think it's a good idea for the town at large. I think it's a good idea for the long-term health of our community in terms of taking an opportunity and making smart decisions about it. One of the things that I think about with respect to the parkway is that it is beautiful, it is stunning, it's very well-used, but it's, there are times when I think it could be better. I do see that it's not, I don't know if it's because of we have shared responsibility and use of that parkway between the state and the town, but I do see that there's room for improvement, and there's room for, there's potential there, and I would love to see more done with that area. The other thing that I think about, if this comes to fruition, is that I would love to see us be more creative with the design within the space. It makes me think of, when I go to, like, national parks, when you see stunning architecture that complements the area, rather than putting a colonial structure in there, I would rather see something of a more contemporary stained-wood design, because I think then you can have useful spaces, but also in complement to the parkland around it. So I thank you for your consideration, and I hope that this does move forward.
Thank you.
How you doing? I'm Michael Tool, I owned 300 Blue Hill Parkway for over twenty years. I lived over there for eight years, and it was a very inconvenient place to live. Life stops when... Life stops when Tedeschi's closes. You can't go anywhere, you just go to bed. Um, in all due respect to your, uh, idea of the, uh, other commercial things, we already tried that with the, um, temple, believe me. That was two years of, uh, chaos. But, uh, people from that area don't have any place to go to get their stuff that's convenient. I moved to East Milton after so long, one of the main reasons was it just is an inconvenient place to live. I mean, if you need something, you gotta drive. Um, I believe that ninety percent of the traffic on Blue Hill Parkway aren't Milton residents. And you could put as many streetlights as you want in there and the people of Blue Hill Parkway wouldn't complain. Um, there's fifteen cut-throughs on the Parkway already. It's not hard to make another one. They made one when they put the high school in, in Home Inc. Uh, there was no streetlights there. I've lived in Milton my whole life. Uh, the Fruit Center used to be Carlton Ford. Uh, I'm sure that was a big to-do when they put that in. Uh, it's great. I don't shop there, it's very expensive, but if you need something, it's very convenient. CVS is there. Uh, I think for the people in Western Milton, West Milton, it'd be a great, great addition. Uh, unless you live there, you wouldn't understand. And it might also relieve the traffic of East Milton Square. Um, it's chaos down there at Rush Hour. And if you live in West, West Milton and you need something at the Fruit Center, it's an hour. It's an hour, the time you get down there and back. It's, uh, very inconvenient to live in West Milton with no, uh, commercial. And I think the Ice House would be a great addition to West Milton. Thank you.
I'm Aneta McSweeney, uh, 250 Blue Hills Parkway. And, um, I've been before you before. And my family has lived on the Parkway for a hundred years. My grandfather had the house built. But we're here tonight to further discuss the proposed zoning change at the Ice House. From residential with a non-conforming business to that of full commercial. A Planning Board draft of zoning has been submitted as a placeholder on the warrant, I believe. Is that correct? The draft continues to include a development scheme larger than the first envisioned by many. And with potentially significant impacts on a historic Parkway, the surrounding conservation land, and the residential community. Even though impact studies have not been done, the proposed development has been found by the Planning Board at its last meeting to be incompatible with the realities of the Parkway site. And therefore, in my mind, there should be no change in zoning. If you should continue to send this draft to the Warrant Committee, many of its specifics need to be discussed openly and probably be amended. The Town of Milton Master Plan notes the community members value Milton's open landscapes, grand estates, and attractive residential neighborhoods. And that the town's rural and residential character are top priorities for preservation. How is adding a shopping center to the lower Blue Hills Parkway in alignment with this vision? The Master Plan also acknowledges the increases in traffic which the Parkway experiences, making it a challenge to ensure the safety of our students walking to school, of the numerous people using it for recreational use, and of the cars seeking to emerge from side streets and Parkway driveways. A further increase in daily traffic trucks servicing the market will only compromise and aggravate the situation further. It should also be noted that the Blue Hills Reservation is a truck-and-bus-free zone. What will be the recommended route for these vehicles to take? This property is very special, being surrounded by conservation land on three sides. Blue Hills Parkway, as you know, is listed on the National Register of Historic Places since 2003. The Commonwealth has comprehensive design and management guidance tailored to its Parkways. To quote, "The Parkway's within the MDC," and this was from that, 2003, so it was still MDC, I guess, at that time. "Systems should retain sufficient integrity of design, location, and setting to demonstrate the original design intent in construction of the road." Blue Hills Parkway is one of its jewels and is a major gateway to our town. Its green space and mature trees should not be compromised. As of 2003, there had been no major changes in the roadway since 1939. This is very unusual. I encourage the Planning Board to keep the uniqueness of this property foremost in its mind and not make the mistake of allowing an out-of-scale commercial development to occur that will only benefit financially a potential developer and the property owner. I would hope that through continued deliberation of alternative proposals, a workable solution can be arrived at that is in alignment with the Master Plan vision of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joe Sloan, I live at 55 Concord Avenue. Um, I wanted to first say thank you, um, to the Board for something that the public may not be aware of, um, unless they've been attending recent Planning Board meetings. And that is that, uh, throughout this process, uh, you, Mr. Chairman, and the rest of the Board have been gracious in, in accepting feedback during the process of the meetings, um, ongoing. So I think it really has been a good give-and-take process and, um, I commend you for that. Um, I wanted to mention a few comments that I have heard regarding this zoning at a recent meeting. A short list. If it weren't for the 40B threat, we wouldn't be here. We shouldn't be zoning for the financial benefit of one property owner. There is no developer at the table participating in these discussions. This is a very dense proposal that would have a negative effect on the Parkway. Maybe a market by itself is just a bad use. The proponent has provided no financials and hasn't done the due diligence required. It isn't the Planning Board's job to determine if it's financially feasible. A two-floor market building is a big mistake. It would destroy a fair amount of the ambiance of the Parkway. I don't think housing over the market is a good planning idea. The vision sounds delightful, but I don't think it fits on the site. You're asking to do something completely different from everything else in the neighborhood. These weren't public comments expressed to the Planning Board. These are comments that Planning Board members made at the last meeting on February 2nd. Now, I know you've worked hard to craft something feasible over the last several months, but what I've learned from attending almost all of these meetings is that it really is an attempt to create a solution to a problem that doesn't exist. As you've acknowledged, there's no developer with project plans in hand or any financials to back up his ideas, especially giving the seriousness that it's the first time that the town has ever been asked to rezone residential property for commercial use. The Planning Board has no evidence to prove that changing the current residential zoning for a hypothetical development would be in the best interests of the Town of Milton, or again, how it would meet any of the outlined priorities of the Milton Master Plan. There's been no discussion about that. Under existing zoning, residential u- uses can be considered and the extension of low-impact, non-conforming business uses could continue after careful consideration. What I'm saying is that a fine residential development with a small commercial component, as originally envisioned, could be built on this site simply with a permit from the Board of Appeals, without any change of zoning, as long as it didn't add undue burdens to the neighborhood or require alterations to the Parkway or surrounding conservation land. That's what I heard the public say when these development discussions began a year ago. Keep it in proportion to its surroundings. Don't change the Parkway, don't change the conservation land. But that's not what this zoning represents. As, as previous speakers have said tonight, no one's aware of how this zoning has changed. There are certain aspects of the language of this zoning that demonstrate how serious the potential impacts could be. In one case, the zoning states, quote, "The open space adjacent to a conservation area shall include some public access to that resource area." Now, creating new trails from private property onto conservation land is illegal. The Conservation Commission has the authority to grant new trail permission. It can't be authorized by zoning. If authorizing trails, new trails, onto conservation land was a good idea for everyone who lived in Milton, then maybe all the homeowners around Pope's Pond and around Turner's Pond could ask the town if they could build a trail from their property onto the conservation land that was close to them. In another place, the zoning states, quote, "There may be two lanes at the outgoing approach to the Parkway, one for left turns and one for right turns." If you've driven on the Parkway, you know that turning left from any driveway, any driveway along the Parkway onto a one-way section of the road is illegal. You can't do it. You can't turn left onto a one-way road. There's no place along the Parkway where it's possible to do this. Turning onto a one-way section, you can't even do that at Milton High School or at Home Inc. or Parkway Methodist Church. There are no cut-throughs. They were specifically asked for during the construction of the Milton High School and the DCR didn't grant that. So you turn, you come out of Guile Road, you turn right. You come out of Home Inc., you turn right. If the Citizens Bank or the Dunkin' Donuts or the New Cabinet Shop in East Milton, all along Granite Avenue, let's say they ask the town to give them the right to make left turns out of their driveway onto Granite Ave. With, with the, with the thought that maybe traffic patterns on Granite Ave could be changed, would you do that? I don't think so. I think they'd be ridiculed for asking something like that. But why is it okay here? Including zoning language that allows a left turn onto Blue Hills Parkway sends a clear signal to the DCR that the residents of Milton support alterations to this Parkway. And that's simply not true. The Parkway demands protection. And lastly, the zoning allows for a two-sided illuminated sign, just a few feet back from the Parkway, nine feet tall and ten feet wide. And its appearance, quote, "Shall be consistent with the appearance of the Parkway." Nine feet high and ten feet wide, that's about the size of the screen. A little bit smaller in width than the screen behind you. Two-sided illuminated. Where is there anything like that, anywhere near the Parkway, that could be, be used as comparison to say that it would be, a sign like that would be consistent? A sign like that would be enormous and there's nothing like it anywhere in the area. The proponents of this zoning in the Planning Board also need to be very clear to the public that rezoning this property to commercial cannot block or prevent the construction of a residential development. Once the property is sold, a developer could decide that this zoning is too challenging to work with. You've acknowledged that at a, at a recent meeting. Maybe the developer isn't interested in building a market. Maybe they come back to the town and ask for the zoning to be changed. Or maybe they decide to go the dense residential route. People have been paying attention, have seen this exact scenario play out at the former Henry site. How could it be any different here? There's no guarantee that a dense residential development, which has been threatened for this site, if this re- rezoning was not approved, there's, there's no guarantee that rezoning this property would prevent that. Rezoning this property to commercial is not the solution and I believe it's very risky. I encourage the Planning Board to review carefully and not recommend this zoning as written to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Good evening. Priscilla Hayden Sloan, 55 Concord Ave., uh, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. I've been very pleased that we've been discussing the conservation land that abuts the property. I think so many people have highlighted what an asset that is. Um, one of the things that I'd like to raise, and I don't think we've discussed it yet, um, is the setback distance to the conservation land to the north side of this development doesn't take into consideration the fact that most of that conservation land is designated by the state as wooded swamp wetland. That setback requires a hundred feet. If a greater buffer zone is required to those wetlands, the calculation of buildable land may need to be made smaller. We've been looking at more and more density, but I think we may have overlooked a detail that may require us to look at an even smaller buildable area than we've currently considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to this? Yes, ma'am.
Hi. Katie Schmidt from 62 Churchill Street. And I didn't come to Milton, and I've lived here about thirty years. I didn't come to Milton for convenience. I came to Milton because of the residential area and because of some of the things that are here. I found Cunningham Park, I found Turner's Pond, Pope's Pond. I live right on the Parkway, so I walk the Parkway, and I think those are the things that I came for. And I shop at a lot of different places, it's very convenient to many other places that I can shop. I don't need some convenience that's right, like a grocery store, um, on the Parkway. I was trying to figure out what this would look like. And I've not been opposed, like, from the very beginning, you know, this is going to happen, this is two acres, what can you do with two acres? And two acres are two football fields. So I took the setback that you have on there, and that's one football field, if you add up the back and the two sides and the front. And that's less setback than was in the original, um, proposal that was put out. So you have left one football field to work with. And you're going to put a fourteen thousand square foot, um, building on that, plus another building, or it'll come up to sixteen. And then you have to put the cars in there. And five cars are, one car is a hu- one hundred square feet. So you've got five cars, or five parking spaces, would be five hundred square feet. So for every one thousand feet of building, you have to have five hundred feet for the cars. Not the aisles, not the landscape, not around that, but just for the cars themselves. So you're, when I started, and then I also saw- So you're, when I started, and then I also saw on the GPS, if you look over and you see the football field at the high school, and then you look at the piece of property, you can't figure out how you're going to get one football field out of here, and how this is going to work, and it's just too dense. And you're going to put residential on top of the, and it's not that, and people came forward and said they wanted an amenity. They wanted a place to come and meet, a place to have coffee, a place to be together. And if you have put up a few tables in the grocery store, and the grocery store's going to want to sell products and not have a cafe in it, you're going to have to get that cafe to be someplace else to meet what people are looking for, for amenities. So it's, I would like it to work, but it's far too dense. And we don't need a football field that's stuffed in. The other thing I looked at, I live on Churchill Street, and that's a quarter of an acre, the lot that I have on. So it's like you have four, four of the lots that my house are on. You're going to put a grocery store, you're going to put parking, and you're going to put another building, and it's all next, it's next to conservation land and a distorted parkway. I would, I'm open, though, to what we can do with that space and what will happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak to this article? I don't see anybody else that wants to speak to this article. Okay. Thank you. Turning it over to the board. Anybody have anything they wish to say?
So the reason why I asked the question at the front of the meeting is not only because I'm concerned about the feasibility of the grocery store, because of the infrastructure requirement, because of the unsure nature of whether or not the state would even allow for a lighted intersection, how we even feel about that as a board, what the traffic impacts would be. I've continued to hear, and think I've heard, of what the last woman just described, neighbors saying they really want a place to meet other neighbors. And what I think of when I hear that is Central Ave and Esprit de Vin and the plate and Coffee Break, where people go and they meet and they have a coffee, and they run into each other and they grab a sandwich, and it's this more sense of community. That, to me, as someone who lives in this area, is a very, very desirable and attractive thing for our neighborhood, and I'm not direct a butter. I'm on Brook Road, but close enough. I can have concerns about the density that I've heard other people say. I think what we're doing, and what I've said before, is driving up the density to support this concept of a grocery store footprint that has to be a certain square footage, that then has to require a certain amount of traffic, that then has to require the traffic signal. So I have concerns. That said, I do think it's a missed opportunity for us to do nothing. I mean, I think this board is here to think about situations exactly like this. We have an owner that says they're going to make changes. I don't, you know, I'm not particularly opposed to a 40B. I don't consider that a threat, actually, but some people may. I'm not opposed to a residential project. I just think that on the west side of town, there are very few places to add these types of smaller-scale, neighborhood-scale, commercial amenities, and this, to me, seems like a really good spot to put that at the right scale. And I'm not convinced that the scale that we're talking about is the right scale. So that's why I was interested in hearing what other people thought. I think we got a mixed bag of response.
Well, you've heard people talk about the Milton marketplace relative to the site, and it seemed like I heard people get up and say, yeah, this is a great idea. And then in the same verbiage, they talked about how crazy it is, the Milton marketplace. So I'm confused. But I, as well, I think it's, it's not a meeting place, because like, you can visualize the Milton marketplace is not a meeting place. It's not a place that you go to.
Not the, not the fruit center itself, but maybe the plate upstairs, right? I meet people at the plate all the time.
I don't think it's the same concept as, like you said, like Central Square is. I don't think it's the same concept as some of the small, little cafe-type breakfast place is there. But I think, I think it's a significant and a drastic change to any use that's been there for, I guess, as long as people have historical knowledge of it. And I don't, I don't foresee a traffic signal in right-hand turn lanes into the facility as a benefit to bicyclists and pedestrians and traffic. So I think, yeah, I don't think it's the right concept for two acres of land in a piece of land like people have just stated that's surrounded by conservation land and residential. I mean, you know, again, people talk about the Milton market. It used to be a different business, but it started out in a commercial zone. So it's, I just don't think it suits the area, and I don't think it'd be a benefit overall to the area or the town of Milton.
Could you, Mike, could you think about a smaller-scale development as something that you could see?
Sure. I think, I think, you know, somebody said something about a, you know, like a doctor's office or a building, or some, you know, small medical building, something to that effect. That, you know, it's too numerous, there's too many numerous ideas to try to start stating them here. I mean, I think you've used the term the creativity. I don't think there's been much creativity here. I think there's been a maximization. I mean, I live in the area, and I personally don't find it that inconvenient to shop. And I, as some of the residents that get up, I see the appeal of Milton as being so close to urban areas, but yet having a rural appeal. So I don't, you know, I don't foresee putting a large-scale, a commercial business there as a benefit. I just don't see that.
Well, I have to agree that two acres is not a big enough lot for what they propose to put on it. They say they need a 14,000-square-foot market, additional commercial space. There's been talk that they need to put in a bank. There's talk that they need to put in 12 apartments just to make it financially feasible. And there simply isn't enough space to do all that. If it were in the middle of the city, maybe, but it's not. And it's not actually a very good place to put a market. And I say that because it's difficult of access. Truck traffic coming down the parkway would be necessary, one way or another. There's no turning. Everything would have to go right and then turn around, and that cut through the median. Not safe. I don't, you know, I, I don't see that this is a, a good idea, and if it could be, you know, we, the placeholder zoning was, I thought, might be possible, and then I was told that it was too small. Well, you couldn't do it. It wouldn't, it, financially impossible. And the owner has given us no financials of any sort whatsoever to justify what the owner wants zoned for the site. And this is, this is, this is wrong. Coming in and asking for rezoning, you've got to do your due diligence. You've got to go and show that what you're proposing is reasonable. You just don't come in and say, "I want it." And I'm afraid that that is what's happened here. So my suggestion would be for the planning board to withdraw the article, and that in the event the owner seeks to get citizen signatures on the owner's article, he would be entitled to do so. But I, I just don't see that there is anything to work with here for the planning board.
So this board tried a year and a half ago or so to look at some general zoning for non-conforming business uses in residential districts, and it didn't go anywhere. In fact, I think there's actually a request from the town meeting for us to look at that as giving it further study, which we haven't done. But there was not a huge receptive audience to that. There was a lot of concern suggesting that general zoning was not right, and there was too many unintended consequences. In the prior hearing tonight, we debated whether or not we should allow 1/20th of the project to be triplexes instead of duplexes. And the concern is that we don't know what we're getting unless we zone specifically towards a plan. And here is the conundrum that I see before this board right now. We don't do general zoning at this point, and to try to do specific zoning for a project that is nothing more than a concept and a dream, in many ways, that has not been really designed in any way other than conceptually, and that has very little support that we can coalesce around tonight, or, you know, even over the last several months, I think leads us to, leads me to agree with Mr. Whiteside, that I think at this point, the four people on this board, I don't see us coming to any sort of consensus, and I don't feel a lot of consensus from the neighborhood. So I would support, regretfully support, a motion to withdraw.
So are we just... I think that we have failed, if that's where our result is, because I think we've been elected to plan, and I don't think we've done anything more than take what was given to us and tweak it. I think we should think about, are there other opportunities here? I mean, what if we cut this development in half? That's why I've been suggesting, are there other opportunities for us commercially that are smaller, that are more neighborhood scale? And maybe I need to describe what that means better. But I don't hear a lot of opposition to something that's smaller. I hear a lot of concern about density. I hear a lot of concern about traffic. I've heard a lot of concern about the signalization, which I too share that concern. Perhaps if we could get to someplace where it's a smaller development, we can put that forward. The owner can still put forward his citizen's petition if he wants to. But I don't think it's right for us to just sit back and say, well, let him do it and roll the dice. Maybe it'll pass, and then what?
But it's a, it's a non-conforming use, unless you're going to put something similar there relative to what it's been used for in the past, then it needs a special permit. And if it needs a special permit, then you have to propose to the board what it is you're looking for a special permit for, which is what they've done.
No, I agree. I'm just saying, why do we have to let them make the rules? Why can't we make them?
Well, I don't think it's our position to dream up, you know, and I'm not trying to be flip about it, to come up, put a concept for a piece of private property that's owned by somebody. That's, that's their decision.
Well, we also have 600 residents who signed a petition that said, that they would like to see some sort of commercial amenities in this park.
Then they need to propose something that'll fit there.
But they haven't been elected to do that. That's my point. We have been.
We're not elected to propose something that fits.
We're even elected to plan for the community. We have a site that we know is changing. For us to sit back and say, okay, well, we'll let the owner decide what he wants to do, and bring it forward to a meeting, to people that may or may not have any understanding of zoning, to let people just make a decision without any input at all from the planning board, I think that we've completely failed. We need to, we need to at least provide input on the article.
Well, as a citizen's petition, we would be providing input, because it would come back to us for input. I just, I agree that we failed, by the way. But I don't think, I agree with Mike. It's not our job to plan someone's site for them. If we want to do this the right way, we should be doing it from a non-conforming, general-use bylaw, and coming up with creative ways to do this on more than one property, in my opinion. I'm not going to sit back and spend this board's time, I'm not going to be excited about sitting back and spending this board's time to come up with a plan when the property owner hasn't even bought into it. If we're going to do site-specific, site-specific zoning, the property owner better be in agreement with what we're doing, because otherwise, we're just creating, you know, we're just creating windmills.
But the, the interesting thing here, though, is that the property owner is not a developer, and has said they're not developing this themselves. So we're not really, we don't have a developer before us that said, this is what we want to do. We have a landowner that says, this is how we're going to maximize our value, and then we're going to try to flip it to somebody who may or may not develop this. So why can't we, as a planning board, say, hmm, this is an opportunity for us to plan ahead, which is, I think, what planning means, on a site where we know that there's going to be some sort of turnover? Maybe an article go, we come up with an article that we think is appropriate, they put forward a citizen's petition, theirs passes, ours doesn't. Who knows? But at least we tried. Maybe nothing happens, and they move forward with a 40B. Well, that's fine, too. That's an alternative. But I just feel like throwing up our hands is just...
Actually, the placeholder article was submitted by the planning board and written by the planning board. And it actually proposed a development, and we're told that it's too small, it won't work, it's financially infeasible, it's got to be made bigger. We submitted an article.
Alex, can you remind us what the parameters of that were?
14,000-square-foot market, six units, a couple of buildings.
Five to 12.
What?
Five to 12.
Five to 12 units, but
With a bonus component.
With a bonus component for 25% affordable.
That's what I tried to put out at the beginning of the meeting. We're 2,000 square feet apart. We're 2,000 square-foot bank building apart from a density standpoint, with what was originally proposed and the changes that were contemplated. There's a lot of configuration and specific issues with regard to how it lays out, but I think, I am pretty sure we're 2,000 square feet apart, off of the bonus opportunity for 12 units.
We are actually very close. Alex is the one who came up with the 10,000 to 14,000-square-foot market. We've never asked for a 10,000 to 14,000-square-foot market. I think we could live with 8,000 to 12,000-square-foot market and a 2,000-square-foot bank and 12, 12 residential units. It's the same density as Alex's. It's just it allows the bank.
As long as the 25% of those units were affordable. Well, that's what I propose.
Well, that's not doable.
Well...
10% affordable.
That is why, that is why what I proposed, you said, isn't doable, because if there were 12 units, 25% had to be affordable.
Well, maybe we can borrow $50,000 that comes out of the next hearing and subsidize the additional units on site. I don't see how we can produce 25% out of 12.
I would suggest that we delegate April to come up with some ideas for next week.
I'd be happy to. I have some ideas before you already. But they were based on the latest redraft, which isn't based on this information. But 8,000 to 12,000 square feet sounds a lot better to me than 16,000 square feet.
I, I'm at a loss. I mean, last meeting, we went through this same point. More than just myself said this was too dense, and yet you came back with the same density, so...
Who, me?
No.
Oh.
No, I, the density that we, that, on the market, was the density that Alex proposed in his draft, that was submitted by the board.
But this is what we had last time, and we sat here and went around the table, and we said that we couldn't, we couldn't get behind this. It was too dense. And yet you're telling us tonight you don't need this density, so I don't understand why you came back with the same density.
We're, we're, the proposal that we've put forward is 2,000 square feet greater than what Alex put forward originally. The difference is the bank. I think a market is probably feasible at 8,000 to 12,000 square feet with a 2,000-square-foot bank.
Actually, that's not so, because your, your units, you have an FAR of 40% or 35,000 square feet, and the units simply have to average at least 750 square feet, but they could average 1,250 or 1,500 square feet. but they could average 1,250 or 1,500 square feet. So, the density is significantly higher than what you proposed.
My proposal said a maximum square footage of 1,000 square feet. I didn't ask for more than 1,000 square feet. You said, you've proposed a minimum. I proposed a maximum. I proposed one bedrooms and studios. You said one to twos. We don't want twos.
And I had a maximum of square footage.
So, 14,000 square feet of commercial area. Up to 12,000 for the market and other components. 2,000 square feet for a bank pad. 12 units upstairs. Maximum unit size, 1,000 square feet. That's not far off of where we've been originally, taking 2,000 square feet off of the ground floor.
But you have to remember now that what was put out there was a placeholder, and it had not been, it had not been developed by a developer. It was a placeholder for discussion purposes.
Understood.
And if, if you thought the market was too big, you should've said so significantly before tonight.
2,000 square feet. If, if the board is willing to work on that proposal, just reducing the size of the, the development by 2,000 square feet, period, that's not a big change. Maybe it's a big change relative, but it's not a big change. So, if that's, if that's acceptable, the board can vote to advance that, great. If not, we'll come back with the citizen's petition. Or we'll work on whatever, we'll look at whatever April comes up for next week and we'll see whether that works.
It's the board's pleasure. I've made it very clear for two, three years now that I think this is a ridiculous way to zone. So the board can decide what it wants to do, and I'll go with the board.
Well, we spent a lot of time, and I said three weeks ago, I didn't want to waste the board's time with, with public hearing time that's going nowhere. We spent three, three weeks with public hearing ti, time that's dramatically, substantially gone nowhere, so.
But that, so that's not fair. So it hasn't gone nowhere for me. I mean, I need to know what people care about and what people have to say. So I understand that with your, in...
I, I take that back. It has been very helpful to hear comment.
It's been very informative for me, and I can't speak for anybody else, but that's part of the consideration when we're moving forward. So, I mean, what I would ask the board for, even though I don't, I hear what everybody's saying, and I know this seems very far off, but I would love the opportunity to use some of the input that we've received tonight to kind of scale this back a little and put a proposal forward for you guys to consider, and if you don't think it's appropriate, then fine, we withdraw. But I'd like, at least like to have a chance.
Totally fine with that. Let's continue it to the 23rd.
Thank you.
Can someone move that for me? Great. It'll be the February 23rd at 7:15, even though it'll be far later than that. All in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you, everyone, for your patience on those two hearings. We're gonna move to the 7, I think, 30. I've lost my agenda, sorry.
For the marijuana.
Can I have some agenda? Oh, we have one more. Sorry, my mistake. We have one more zoning article.
Recreational Marijuana Moratorium is a great idea.
That's my feeling. You wanna make that motion?
So, can we, yeah, let's move to the Marijuana Moratorium. We have an article in front of us. Is there any, I have to do this.
It's on my notes. I need it back.
Okay, the next public hearing is for the Recreational Marijuana Moratorium. Does the board have anything they wish to address on this before we open it up to the public? Okay, we're gonna open this up to the public. Does anyone from the public wish to comment on the Recreational Marijuana Moratorium article? Mr. Sloan.
I just have one quick thought. Again, Joe Sloan, 55 Concord Avenue. I just have one quick thought that it comes from a recent Boston Globe article that pointed out that a somewhat overlooked aspect of this recent voter referendum was the provision for marijuana cafes, which I, I'm not completely informed, but again, just based on that article and a little bit of other research I did, my understanding is that the premise would be, this would be a place where, because the consumption of marijuana in public would not be legal, this would be a place that someone could take his or her own marijuana tube and, and smoke it at that place. Just want to make sure that that is not overlooked in your consideration when language, for example, the, the draft Parkway zoning has an exemption for, quote, marijuana dispensaries. It would be important to, to make sure that the language that was there protected against any other possible, any other kind of retail establishments, if you will, that were different from what would be perceived as a dispensary, so.
Mr. Clark.
The town would adopt a temporary moratorium on the use of land or structures for the marijuana establishments and marijuana retailers. The moratorium will be in effect through June 30th, 2019. During the, during the moratorium period, the board of selectmen will undertake a review process to address the potential impacts of citing marijuana establishments in the town. Consider the Cannabis Advisory Board regulations regarding the marijuana establishments and marijuana retailers and related uses. Determine whether the town shall restrict any or all licenses for marijuana establishments and marijuana retailers. Determine whether the town will prohibit onsite consumption at marijuana establishments and marijuana retailers, and shall consider adopting a new provision of the zoning bylaw to address the impact of the operation of marijuana establishments and marijuana retailers and the related uses or any other action related there, too.
Thank you.
So, they'll be looking at your point in the interim.
Thank you very much. I, I, again, it came to my attention because the word dispensary specifically is used in the draft zoning for the Parkway.
Dispensary would have been for the medical marijuana. This is for the retail.
There's no exclusion in that, in the draft zoning for the Parkway for any retail establishment. There's an exclusion for dispensary.
Medical marijuana would have been required to go into a business district. Separate zoning that got put in 2014.
Thank you.
Did you get your question answered?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak to this from the public? Okay, do we have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on. 7:20. Pulte Homes Special Permit for Cluster Development, Milton Woods Town Farm Site, continued from February 9th.
Hello.
Welcome back.
Good evening. Good evening. Hi, Alex. I know it's late. For the, for the record.
We're just getting started. We're fine.
Board members. Mark Mastriani with Pulte Homes and Ree Blue with Pulte Homes as well. We're here for our continued special permit for Milton Woods off of the end of Governor Stoughton Lane, the town farm. So we were here on February 9th, and I just wanted to let the, the board know that since, since we've been here, we, we have been to the Conservation Commission again, and we have completed that process. So, I think it was Tuesday night, the Conservation Commission closed and approved the hearing for, for this project. So I thought I'd inform the board of that progress. And since we were here last, we, we submitted the required material to the board in response of what we spoke about. There was a construction management plan, and you had asked us to add some specific, more detail to it. And we, we did add that detail, and I think we've provided that to the board. And also, there's a draft special permit being circulated, and we had an opportunity to review it. And we did submit comments, red line comments to the board as well for your consideration. We appreciate the opportunity to, that, that we had to review it. So, you know, with that, I'll turn it back over to you.
You also went to the Historic Commission.
We did, yep, and, and thank you, Bill, for attending it with us and, you know, helping us answer their, their questions. So we did attend the Milton Historical Commission meeting again. I think that was also this week. And, and we reviewed their comments that they had submitted to Mass Historical Commission. We went through them. We've responded to them, and, and at the end of the meeting, they've seemed satisfied with our commitments that we have made. And part of my revisions into the draft permit, there's a condition at the end where we memorialize the commitments we made to the Milton Historical Commission, and, and we put them in this permit so that it didn't, you know, it didn't, so that it's followed through on.
Okay, thank you. I see you've added a, added some language as number 21.
Yeah, they, they wanted some screening between the property and the town farm. We added that. We also, you know, re, recommitted to the, the salvage of the existing stone walls that are on the site, and we've located them on a plan, and that plan was submitted to, to this board as well. Essentially, it, it goes around the retained parcel, so it kind of keeps the character of the historic nature of the property, of the retained property.
Okay, thank you. Board?
What I wanted, what I'd suggest that we do is, is with respect to the landscape plan, we need a starting standard, I mean, especially the restricted area. You should landscape the restricted area in the way you're going to present it to the homeowners you sell it to. In other words, if... You're going to get your landscape architect to look at this restricted land and landscape it. And then that will be the starting point. And if the homeowner then wants to change it, we'll have a plan that we can look at to see that there's been a change. But without a landscaping plan showing more than just the four-inch trees on the restricted land, but showing how the restricted land will be landscaped initially, it seems to me that that is a, a good way to start. Because the special permit provides for changes in the, or the special permit, as I conceive it, would provide for changes in the restricted land that are different from what's shown on the site plan. But if the site plan shows nothing, the language in the special permit doesn't work. That's what I, so a detailed site plan, I think, is, in order, including shrubs and the, the, I was thinking of the 131 Elliot Street landscaping plan, which showed the smaller shrubs as well as the trees, and, and maybe you watched that while you were there, or maybe it came after you. But in any event, that was a pretty good landscaping plan, in my view.
Alex, I thought the intent, though, was not to actually landscape in that zone. The intent was to leave it the way it is, so.
Restricted land?
Right.
We need to know what it looks like.
I, I think, I think you're interpreting what I interpret. I don't think he means, intended, I think he means the landscape, what appears there.
But we, we did get a, a plan from them, which...
We did. Tim just brought it up.
Yeah, which identifies all of the existing trees that we asked for. I mean, it was my understanding that there wouldn't be additional landscaping in that zone.
If, if there are no shrubs and no undergrowth, then it's, it's not adequate.
That's a completely different understanding than I had.
But if you go to the survey that you had, that you were flipping through, the, the ser, so just backing up, a few prior meetings ago, one of the, one of the requests that this board made was for us to provide a plan of all of the existing trees that is, that is within.
That's the one you were looking for, right?
That's, it's right there. So we went out and we had our surveyors survey all of the trees within the restricted land between lots 13 through, through 23, which is the area along the two property lines that you see there. And our intention was, and our understanding was that the restricted land makes up a portion of the 100-foot buffer, the natural buffer that we've made great pains to preserve for the benefit of the neighbors and for our own homeowners. And it's intended to remain natural and untouched, and we've located all of the trees in that area so that it provided a basis of what's there today. We were not planning to landscape the, the...
Look, if there's undergrowth there, it needs to be known that it's there, because otherwise the homeowner can remove it, and there's no way of knowing that the homeowner has removed it.
I think, I think what Alex is, and you can just jump in if I'm not kind of reiterating what you're saying in different terms to help explain it, is more de, I know, that's very detailed on the trees and stuff, but I think we're looking for something that displays a little more than that. I mean, maybe there's a significant boulder there. Maybe there's an outcropping of rock. Maybe, maybe there is undergrowth and brush and something more specific, so that, you know, I mean, with what you have there, and I'm not trying to be argumentative, but what you have there, I could go out there and there could be tree, 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 and everything else is cut down, and you threw in wood chips or something. It's the same as it appears on the plan there. So I think it's just, I think we're, we're heading the same direction. We're intending the same things. I think we just want some evidence that can display that, like a pre-construction survey. I want to know that it's the same after you're done as when you start. And I understand the detail of the trees there, but it still doesn't give me a good picture of what it looks like behind said lot today versus what it will look like when it's done. I mean, you could say, we built it, and look, they haven't touched it. We're not gonna touch it, but a year or two, three, who knows what it'll look like?
Yeah, it's just, it's just new information. I, I, I mean, we can take pictures and have a picture.
I don't, I don't wanna rehash the whole story here, but the 100-foot buffer was conceived originally and intended to be 100-foot buffer, plain and simple, no touch. It was gonna be owned by the, the association or whatever the case may be. We've kind of massaged things. I think you guys have tried to do your best to fit your property in, get what you need out of it, and give people what they want in, in a slightly different manner than I believe it was originally intended. And it, as we sit here today, that's my opinion, but I think it's a strong opinion. But with that said, we just want some evidence to show that when it's done, I mean, you've written some good ruling in there on the building inspector coming in, the homeowners association responded to it. If that doesn't do, we have fines. But there has to be some basis to look at it and say to the person, look what you did. What do you mean, look what I did? I didn't do anything.
I totally get what both of you are looking for, and I think it's a reasonable expectation. I do think it's an undue burden for this applicant to have to go out and put on a survey every shrub and every... I mean, where do you stop, right? Where's the line?
No, I understand that.
So, I mean, but, but there, but there could be an interesting, there has to be an interesting solution. Perhaps there's an obligation to put an exist, an as-built or an existing condition plan together at, at Certificate of Occupancy. Or you need to submit photographs, but putting all the...
Photographs might be...
That might be an interesting...
And I think, I understand what you're saying, Brian. It, it is...
Where do you stop, right? I mean...
It's a difficult thing. It's a difficult to get, but what, what I'm also saying is, I think some concessions have been made to work with people.
I agree.
And in, in fact...
So a photo says a thousand words, right?
As you, as you look at it, it seems rather difficult to put it together, but yet we need some kind of basis to apply to all the rules that have been written.
So do photographs work? I mean, can we attach photographs? I mean, can we attach photographs to the certificate of occupancies?
I think, I think photographs could work, but I don't, I don't know legally, like what you're getting at, if that, if that would be a basis for a land determination.
If it's a condition in the permit, and we had to take photographs before certificate of occupancy and submit those to the planning board or to the building inspector so that it was in the file, you know, that was, that's something that, you know, we could do. You certainly can't take photographs today, right? So, it would be more appropriate to do it at seasonal times of the year. So, I would.
Again, I think we're trying to work this out, and I think you understand where we're getting at. And I, and I think from our side, we understand it's, how do you get there?
Mm-hmm.
But we, we can figure that out, but we need to get there.
It protects both sides. I mean, it protects your homeowners as much as it protects the, the letting homeowners. If someone says you did something, they, they're going to have that photo as well to say, no, I didn't, here it is. It protects both sides.
Yep, that's a fine suggestion.
But again, I reiterate the same point, but you've, you've set up a good criteria here. But we have to have some initial basis to apply it to.
And actually, this is something that I made, thought I had made clear to be conveyed to you, and I'm sorry that it wasn't.
So, does such a condition work to satisfy the concern, a condition along the lines of a photo at certificate of occupancy?
Well, of, of course, we want the conditions now, not the conditions following construction.
Right.
I mean, I, I think, I think it could be a, a combination of both. And I understand what you said, Brian, how far do you go? But, you know, you could, I, I believe there's some stone walls back there. You could show some of the existing stone walls that fall in that area. I mean, there, there are some large elements there beyond just the trees that might be able to be shown on a plan.
And, and if the undergrowth is typical, I mean, you would know if it's typical or not. But if it is typical, then you could have typical undergrowth in the restricted area.
I, I certainly can't name it for you, but you, you could say, in, you know, that general area, there's, I don't know what the hell, but blueberry bushes or whatever they are, something. I mean, you could, you know, a horticulturist or something to tell you, that's X, that's what that is. Just so, you know, some days, people go out there and say, where's the, you know, I know it isn't exactly right there, but they said there's bushes of this type, there don't seem to be any of that anymore. They all die, or, I mean, they're just, you understand what I'm saying. There has to be some basis to apply what I think you've done, a good job of, you know, outlying, outlaying rules. But I, but I just, I wouldn't know where, if I was the building inspector and I went out there, I'd be like, yeah, you can't do it, but what do you do? I don't know what you did, what was there before?
We could take a number of pictures and have like a, a picture location plan that shows where you're standing and where your, where your picture. And you could take one or two from the, from the lot, from the restricted landline looking in on, on each lot. Something that would easily be done.
Just to, again, work with that, you could cut this plan per the lots and blow it up, so that I have an additional plan per lot. And add some of the elements, like you say, the stone wall, you know, about rock outcropping, I don't know what's back there.
Mm-hmm.
But just something to say, you know, this is generally, and then, then the photographs would supplement that. And that seems to me would be something that could, somebody could work with beyond us at the planning board, somebody in the future that wants to apply these guidelines that you've put together.
Well, what we want is, we don't want you to be able to look right through the restricted land, because that's not the point of a buffer. We want, and, and of course, if you just have trees, then you've got, your, your view shed under the trees is, is not what you want to have happen. And it, it does seem to be, I, I mean, I don't think there's probably anything very special about the undergrowth other than the fact that without the undergrowth, the screening would be, would be practically non-existent. And therefore, the undergrowth is a critical element of the screening.
And I, I think you've pointed out somewhere along the line I was reading that indirectly or directly, this is, this is a, should be seen as a benefit to both sides. The existing properties that are there and the future properties that, you know, will be, like you may have heard me say earlier, Milton has a nice rural feel to it. It's, it's nice to be, have a home where you don't look out the back and there's people on top of you.
I, I guess I'm just a little confused at this point. I've heard about typical undergrowth, the undergrowth is going to change every single year just based on it being natural. You're going to have shrubs die, you're going to have shrubs grow wild. I mean, is a reference to typical undergrowth something we can coalesce around? I just, I think we need to, I'm trying to move this application towards a, a conclusion here. And I think to just sort of throw out, well, we need something, isn't going to, I think we need to give some definition here as to what we're looking for and move this along.
I thought I had, and maybe you can come back at me if you don't think I have. Like, if you blow up sections lot by lot, we need some more detail on the plan to start with. And I think I've described that. As far as the undergrowth, yeah, it changes, but it, it doesn't change drastically. If some new homeowner comes in and brings a certain shrub in from Indonesia or something that doesn't exist there today, somebody can go in there. I'm not certainly going to go in there and look at bushes and tell you what they are. I don't know what their scientific name or probably common name is. So, but there is somebody who does, and they can label things there to some specific nature and as well to supplement it with photographs that it could help. It just, very simply, to have a good set of rules is fine, but if you have no basis to apply those rules, it's difficult. And, and I think from start, this bu, this 100-foot buffer, I always feel on the planning board, I represent the people of the town of Milton, and, and the people closest to the site have said that this was a very key element. And they understood it to be, plain and simple, 100-foot buffer that wasn't going to be owned by the property owner. That was going to be 100-foot buffer that was common land, if you will. But I, again, I believe we've kind of worked to get to a point that helps everybody. But we, again, and I think I've made my major point, we need something to guide a building inspector, to guide the homeowners association to apply these rules.
And to guide the owner of the restricted land.
Right.
So, the, the only issue is that now we have a foot and a half of snow. So, by the time any undergrowth comes back, it's going to be.
Well, I think, I think Mark made a good point. I mean, yeah, we're, we're certainly not going to take pictures now, that's a good point.
If it was a condition in the permit to provide these more detailed plans later, I think that would be acceptable to us. If that's, if the board would find that reasonable and acceptable.
Early spring, maybe June-ish, early June, when things are starting to bloom and grow, you, you, photographs would certainly help. And as well, you could get somebody in there.
They just need to document, they just would need to document it prior to receipt of permits, and, and I think we'd be in good shape.
Just file it prior to construction with the planning department. It's really just a documentation of the existing condition that augments what that is. So, I don't think it's something that we, you know, would need to necessarily review. It just needs to.
At some point, we'd need to review it.
Well, I, I would just say that I would think that Tim or Bill could probably review it to see that it meets the need that we've asked for.
I think that would be the way to do it, that before the building department can accept it, planning staff needs to sign off that it's acceptable for the purposes of assessing what we're trying to accomplish here.
Is there any, is there any way we can get input on that, Alex, before it moves forward?
Well, I, I, see, what we want is undergrowth. And I don't think we necessarily are wedded to the existing undergrowth as long as we know what kind of undergrowth there is in this area and that it's maintained. Such, you know, similar, such undergrowth is maintained, I mean.
I would say that, and the public comment that we received was that there would be a zone that would be a no disturbance zone. I think it's a different thing to say that you're going to have landscaping come in because you don't know that the existing undergrowth provides adequate screening. So, I think this is something, a new requirement that hasn't been discussed for the months that we've been discussing.
I discussed this a month ago.
No, no, I think, I don't think he's communicating. I don't think it's, again, correct me if I'm wrong, Alex. I don't think it's Alex's intention that in this 60-foot piece of land that we go in and landscape it. He wants to know what the landscape is that exists there.
That's my understanding.
That was my understanding, but what he just said made me think that he was talking about that that, it may not be adequate to do screening, and therefore, a landscape plan might be necessary. I agree with what you said, the document what's there, with photographs, and maybe have a large plan for each lot, so each lot owner sees what the expectation is when they buy. But coming in to say that we decide whether that is adequate screening or not, I think is a, is a different thing. And I don't think we, I think that's something completely new, and I wouldn't really support that. I support having a condition, what you suggested with the photographs and the plans that get filed with the, with the planning department. If you want to see those come back, I suppose.
I have no problem with that.
I don't have a problem with that, but I, I don't support having a landscape plan in that zone.
Yeah, I'd like to see them come back, just so you know.
So, rather than having staff do it, you want the board to evaluate it? I'm fine with that.
Do we have a landscape plan for the, the roadway to? Can you check that?
Yes, we do have it, I did check it. It does show the, the changes at the entrance that we talked about with the stone wall and the seating area.
It's on the other end of it?
It, it's on the landscape plan, sorry?
Do we have a landscape plan showing the emergency access and how that's going to be landscaped?
The emergency access, sorry, we have the street trees.
We have street trees. The emergency access is just going to be grass pavers.
It's going to be what?
Grass pavers.
I understand, but around the emergency access, what you're going to do with the area, I, I mean, how wide is the emergency access?
It's 18 feet wide, 18 or 20, whatever is shown on the plan.
Pavers will be 12 feet?
The pavers?
Yeah.
Will be 18 or 20 feet.
Higher access is, and what about the land around the emergency access? So, how is that going to be treated?
It would be, it's so, it's up on the screen. So, the, the idea here is it would be grassed, and then on the, the other sides of the emergency access drive would be the, the individual lot, their lawn, their, their yards. So, it's 18 feet wide and, and we've.
Got 18-foot wide grass paver, and then the lawn is going to extend out how far?
To the, to the right of way, to the property line.
To the property line. Are you going to have any trees or shrubs or anything on there? Bill shakes his head no.
Wow, that's the people's lawn on both sides. It's the demarcation point between those two homes.
Okay, all right.
Tim, you can call up the landscape plan now. There's two landscape plans at, at the end of the set, L1 and L2.
We've got a temporary landscape plan or a preliminary landscape plan, which you've provided. It's entitled preliminary, that's, is this the preliminary?
How old-fashioned.
You got it?
Yeah, we got it.
So, the street, the street trees that we've chosen there are in compliance with the town's tree approved tree list that was provided to us. The size of the street trees is compliant with zoning. We've added, I think there's three different, three or four different species there. I think that was a prior comment to, to add variety rather than just one street tree. So, that's what we're showing.
What's going to happen then? The open space? I mean, you, you're going to, you're going to grade it. So, presumably, after you grade it, you're going to either plant grass or you're going to landscape it.
So, we would plant grass within our limit of work, and then on the other side of the limit of work would be, would we remain natural?
So, you wouldn't touch this area?
That's a huge wetland right there. That's one of the pinch points of the project. I apologize, it's not showing up on this plan, but if you look on the, the grading plans of the project, there's an isolated wetland there that we've worked diligently to avoid.
Tim, can you also show L2?
So, the erosion control line there will set the limit of work, and anything on the downhill side of that erosion control will not be touched. And then on the work side of the erosion control would be, would be grassed in the sidewalk and the roadway.
Well, there's a lot of grass and not much landscaping, in my view. But in any event, I am prepared to focus on.
That's actually a basin. So, you really, that's a basin.
No, you, we realize that, we realize.
Alex is saying there's no landscaping.
No, I'm talking about the plan in, as a whole. It isn't one big basin, Bill. That was just a general comment. I, I really want to focus on the restricted land and, and how to make sure that it provides the screening, which is, in my view, the crux of the permit. That if that screening isn't provided, the permit doesn't get issued. So, that's, it's important to me.
Is there something else, Alex, besides the photographic, what we just spoke about, other than the language that you're looking for to make sure that it achieves it?
Well, you know, it's, it's, it's easy to set up a camera, say, 40 feet away from where the line is and, and get a picture of, of course, the, the thing is 60 feet deep. And cameras don't often penetrate to that, unless there's no, unless there's no undergrowth.
Well, the undergrowth won't even be there in this, fully until summer, probably, or June, probably, yeah.
I mean, I would, I, I, this is not a new issue. This is an issue that I raised a month ago. And so, I'm not, I don't feel like I'm, I'm being unfair, and it's a, it's a critical issue.
Are you comfortable with the, the solution that we've talked about?
How that's going to work.
So, if they did do their, take their survey and put that into individual lots at a larger scale, you would get a better sense of the numbers of trees, right? And then if they took two or three photographs per lot, it, you know, if there's a rock outcropping or something unusual about the lot, to make sure that's documented. And if there's some general pattern to the undergrowth, it seems to me that that would be easier to accomplish in photograph than in survey.
Yeah, I, again, I'll just reiterate the same point over and over again, but I, I think it's some combination of both, some additional detail.
And we're comfortable doing that. I think we can produce a, a very clear plan of what's there.
And then photographs, just, you know, be creative and be smart, and, you know, as, as people are describing, I'm thinking, yeah, you stand back and take a photograph. Well, you know, put an orange stake this, saying this is the beginning of that 60-foot. Put an orange stake back on the backside in a couple of locations as you take your pictures. When you're done, you can yank them out and keep moving, but just to help visualize where in the picture we're talking.
So, I have a, I have some proposed language to try to move this along a little bit. Prior, and this is not complete, but prior to issuance of a building permit, the condition of the open land and the buffer area shall be documented with a combination of photography and survey to indicate the natural condition of the areas and establish a baseline condition. Planning board shall review. Planning board shall review such documentation prior to issuance, to determine adequacy prior to issuance of any building permits.
But of course, legal language has to be scrutinized, but that sounds, it sounds sufficiently good.
Great, something to work with.
Okay.
It's something to work with. Why don't we work with that?
I'll type something up for Tim to get around to everybody.
Sure.
Could you send that to Bill? I'm not going to be in tomorrow.
Sure.
And town hall is closed on Monday.
So are we going to go through the language or the construction plan or what's the plan here?
I'm open to suggestions. I'd like to move it along.
Can I make a suggestion from the audience?
Certainly.
I think it's important to take into consideration that open land will become infested with invasives. I have a number of fields that I have been working with that were previously open, out past two years ago and they are now absolutely, a part of it is NBC land and it's been taken over by invasives, so it should be clarification. The control of the invasive should be part of that program.
I believe we have that in here, don't we?
Okay. We have to double check because we've reviewed three different pieces.
It was intended, we certainly discussed it.
Okay.
But I agree that that should be in there. We should be able to maintain invasives out.
What do we have on the?
I thought we actually took that out because of.
Well, you did take it out.
We have the no-touch zone.
I think it makes sense to be able to take out the invasives.
If you take them out, but they have to be replaced.
What?
Why? Because it provides screening.
Yeah, I, I, you know, it's.
No, no, I.
Again, I'm not a.
I'm going to contest that one, that, that.
What's, what, what is the downside of invasive plants?
Well, if you could have vines that could kill trees, for example.
Right, and they come in your yard and it's in that, they're.
Well, I, you know, certainly if it comes out of this zone, then people can cut and take care of the yards.
But they could strangle a tree.
Right, bittersweet. Goes in and kills trees.
I've seen it in my own property.
Well, that's, that'll get, that'll again be part of the survey and the photograph that if something, that invasive that didn't exist before, I'm certainly sure that nobody would have a problem with, you know, taking care of it.
Well, there's a mechanism for the homeowners association to review a change, right?
Exactly. In, in the rules that you've written, you've, a couple places you've indicated things could be done with more or less permission.
You could put the invasive removal in that category, let it be reviewed.
I don't know if it's, I don't know if you need to add the language. My point is if it, we've set the standard that this is what exists as a baseline, if something comes in there and, yeah, is destructive, then.
As long as homeowners are clear about what they can and can't do with it.
I mean, it is, it gets to a common sense thing, the guy that lives behind you that's this is killing all the trees, I wouldn't want it to kill the trees, you don't want it to kill the trees, the homeowners association don't want to kill the trees, is all right for take care of? Yeah. It wasn't there before, now it's there and it's going to cause damage, okay.
Do you think it's there? That, that language is there?
I don't know if it's necessary. I'm saying indirectly, I think it could be taken care of. I think he has language in the.
Within this that could.
That could address it. Not, it doesn't state it directly, but it certainly could address it.
What's the town done on the, on the subject? What's the town done on the drainage on town land? Are they good with that? Good to go?
Has there been any, has there any discussions?
Is the town good to go with the drainage on the town for a property?
So we've, our discussions are continuing. We've met with, with Bill as a representative of the trustees and then we've met with the town administrator and we've been, you know, working, we've been talking to them about that.
The, the language that's on the screen, Tim, reflects the language that the applicant provided us today?
Yes.
Okay, so I think you did have something in this language, right, that addressed that storm drainage easement area? Is that right?
It is. Actually, it was, it was already in there and it's worded acceptably to us. It, it pretty much says that there's a condition, a few more pages down. It acknowledges that we have drainage that's integral to our project.
Number eleven.
Number eleven. And that we have to come back to the board with written documentation or an easement from the trustees or the trustees acknowledgement that they've okayed the drainage.
That's number fourteen.
Fourteen, sorry, Tim. I, I have the decision too, so I could be looking at it.
And the invasive species language is in here. Invasive species may be removed and replaced with plantings which provide equivalent or better screening.
Excellent.
Okay.
Is it the restricted plan or the open line?
The buffer.
In the buff?
Buffer area.
Excellent.
Thank you, April.
Welcome.
So are there, so what we're working from, I think at this point, is we got a document today, Pulte edits two sixteen seventeen that I incorrectly identified earlier. This, we are actually now working from it. This is a document that Pulte marked up. I think it came in this afternoon.
It did, this morning.
This morning. I, I don't, I'm sure most have not had a chance to review it. But let's, I, I would love to be, to know if there's any other major issues. I think we identified a big one tonight, which is great and hopefully we can bring some closure to that. But if we can identify anything else, it would be great to be in a position at the next meeting that we discuss this at, to be able to walk through this and bring it to a pretty final position.
I think we're pretty close.
I do too.
I, I did review the comments or the suggested edits and I'm comfortable with it.
So am I.
I mean, pending any other legal language that Alex may, may find in it. And I also wanted to say that I appreciate the edits in the construction management plan. One, I just have one question. The stone walls along Unquity Road and coming up the new road, I didn't see in the schedule when those walls will be going in.
They would be going in very quickly, so, you know, the first thing that we need to do is to build the entry coming in off of Unquity.
But you're, you're planning to do the stone at that time, right?
Yes.
Okay.
In order to build the road, we have to put the walls in and.
And actually, one thing is, I just wanted to double check the hours of operations. Cage, was that anyone?
While you're doing that, are the walls concrete faced with stone?
They are faced with stone.
Yes.
That was on the.
Natural stone.
Yeah.
The, the spec that's on the landscaping plans is, I think it's, it's a, it's a company out of Lexington or somewhere, but they, they, they specialize in natural stone walls, making the walls look as natural as possible.
Okay, so on the hours, I think I mentioned last time that I feel as if this board ought to be consistent with the hours, so I, I think I asked what we did at Woodmere. Does this, Tim?
We looked last time, didn't we? It was eight, it was eight in the morning start.
So I, because my.
That was Saturday.
Yeah, so.
I don't think so.
During the week?
I think, on Woodmere, I think it was. You can check again, but I'm almost positive it was.
I think Tim pulled it up two meetings ago.
Two meetings ago?
Yeah, I, I guess I'd, I'd say that seven on a Saturday seems early to me. Seven on a weekday is probably fine, but six, I mean, I guess it, you know, in some ways it depends what the activity is, but there can be some pretty heavy equipment, especially if you run into the blasting. The blasting hours are going to be reduced, right?
We did reduce the blasting from nine, actually nine AM to five PM.
Right, there it is, okay. So I'm sorry, so you did, we did look up Woodmere and I don't recall what they, what they are.
About two seconds.
Okay.
But what, the five, what holidays you're talking about?
Seven to six.
Okay, great.
Seven to six on weekdays, okay?
Great.
And seven to three on Saturday. Well, Woodmere does have some pretty close abutters, but some parts of the site do as well. So I don't know, Mike, you live closer, what you, if you feel as if you're comfortable with the hours here.
Be nice to start at eight on Saturday.
Yes, there, there's construction work on a house near my house where they were getting a delivery at six forty-five AM the other day, which is the thing, and the beeping truck backing up down the street, which is the thing that I was mentioning, I think, last time too, is that trucks wanting to get there on the seven o'clock delivery, if they get there early, what are they doing? But I don't know, since we already have that there in Woodmere, I leave it to others. I, I think it would be nice on Saturdays to have an eight AM start, but.
I know we made Jill Kathleen the eight o'clock.
Which one?
That's the one off of Pleasant Street.
Ah, okay.
Because they actually have people.
I think Ms. Taguayis is making a proposal for eight o'clock.
Yes.
On Saturday.
On Saturday. Bill, did you have something else?
I did. Number seven in the, in the special permit itself under, I think that's trees, buffer, buffer zone, fifth paragraph down. The trees that would be replaced, it says any, any trees removed for that reason shall be replaced by a tree of the same or similar species. The replacement tree shall be, at planting, have a caliper of at least four inches. A four inch tree, you're not getting trucks into the backyard of these houses to replace a four inch tree. So I'm thinking that you may want to have the cumulative of four inches. So if you had two twos, you'd have your four inch tree.
Why? You can, you can, you can get it in there with a bobcat or something like that, a four inch tree?
You're asking that nothing go into these areas, you're trying to preserve your, your understory.
I just assume see a more mature tree than worry about, who else with a bobcat for a little distance?
Yeah, although I do think getting two trees out of it is an interesting idea.
Thing is though, if you have trees that don't have any room to grow, you're not going to have the same kind of.
That's fair.
I, I just assume, like I say, leave it the way it is.
I have a couple of quick comments on the buffer language and I, I apologize, I was trying to flip through it right now to see if it was already included, because I, has Alex's language been inserted at this point for the buffer? The one that Pulte reviewed, is that Alex's? Okay, great. So I couldn't get, get through it quite quickly enough to look at this, but I wanted to make sure that the holiday lighting was clear, it was clear that the property line is the edge of the buffer zone on the resident property, not the edge of the buffer zone on the neighbor's property. So we, we put in something that you could have holiday lighting, but we want that holiday lighting to be at the edge of the resident property.
I thought I took it out.
You might.
I took it out because it's not the holiday lighting.
Okay, great.
Yeah, we were okay with that.
Okay, fine. And then the liens, did you address the liens as far as the schedule of how the fines would be imposed?
Well, I didn't because I don't think it's going to happen, but it's there, it's a, it's, it's an ad tororum sort of thing. It will keep them on the straight and narrow without it being really real.
At who?
Don't you know that?
Okay. I would prefer specifically schedule a fine myself and then I guess that was it. I'll look at it one more time before next time.
So we're going to move to continue.
So let's move to continue. Do we want to do?
Are those all the comments?
Yeah, is any other major issues?
We should try and make this to be the last.
I'd like to close the public hearing if I can get that motion.
Why, I vote that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. And now move to continue. We can either do the ninth or the twenty-third, depending on how much more we think we're going to need for zoning on the twenty-third. Because Cheryl's already missed. All right, so.
We close the hearing.
Oh, that's true.
Oh, right.
I'm participating by phone, right?
And you're participating by phone, okay. So two twenty-three at seven forty-five and feel free to have dinner beforehand. Can I get that motion?
Oh, so moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye. Because the public hearing is closed.
Oh, because the public hearing is closed. Okay.
Well, thank you.
We'll see you around seven thirty-five.
Well, thanks for coming in again. I hope you enjoyed our zoning discussion.
It was, it was fruitful, yeah.
It was.
It was funny because we thought we were late, because I, I thought, I had us on the agenda for eight and then I saw the new agenda and it was, I made a mistake, I thought it was eight. And then I saw it at seven twenty and we were, we weren't here at seven twenty.
You made it.
We were.
All right, now we're going to go to our seven thirty hearing, which is.
Thank you.
Our last hearing for Dennis and Martha Burke, special permit for cluster development, two forty-five Highland Street, continued from January twenty-sixth. No, that's not right. Is it? Really, that long ago? Welcome back. February twenty-ninth, continued from February twenty-ninth.
Thank you.
Ninth.
Gosh.
We submitted last week a set of plans. Brian has three.
Brian needs to pass that up.
Cheryl.
Sorry.
We already have ours.
Okay, so, I'm, I'm sorry. So we submitted a full set of plans last week. Been quite a bit of back and forth between Jim Burke, DeSalle Burke and Lisa Eggleston on the final, final designs for the stormwater system. We've responded to all of her requests. The design was modified really in response to some of her comments. It has dramatically reduced the amount of underground stormwater detention on the northerly side of the proposed roadway. There's a small cultech system that's likely to be located in a, an area that's within the wooded, wooded area, but with minimal tree removal and the tree removal will be new growth. And then a reasonably sized detention basin that will be designed to receive drainage from both the roadway and from the ground, and from the, the property itself and then would drain out through a pipe, past the underground cultech and each would drain into the town's drain system as necessary. It would be essentially a swale within the existing field area behind the trees that are along the front, that, that side of the frontage and then would be replanted. So it would be just regraded with an outlet and then replanted. I think yesterday we got a final comment from Lisa Eggleston saying that the design meets all of her conditions. That, I think, was essentially what we've been really waiting for, for quite a while. This plan reflects a seven lot cluster with clear lot lines, but in con, in concept that we had discussed with the, with the board in August and I think that the board had voted to, at least devoted to approving concept. And we have confirmed in an updated filing, the notion of a fifty thousand dollar payment to the Affordable Housing Trust based on, I think the board's calculation was ten percent of the anticipated value of the additional lot over the lots that would be authorized under a standard subdivision. So six lots authorized under a standard subdivision, this is a seventh lot, ten percent of the, of the imputed value. And so. And so with that, I would open it to the board's questions and request that the board consider closing the hearing tonight and-
Great, I just want to look to staff, anything? Tim or Bill?
We did send it to Lisa Eggleston, she did respond right away. I believe your, her email is in here. If not, these revisions look fine to me, based on the nature of the soils and the fact that the previous testing was conducted during drought conditions. I do recommend confirmatory testing at the proposed infiltration area when the system gets installed. Even if there is not adequate separation to groundwater, though, the current design does meet the maximum extent practicable criterion for CD soils. Lisa Eggleston.
Thank you. I'm going to open it to the public, and ask if anybody would like to speak to this application. I don't see anybody. I'd like to, first of all, just quickly commend this applicant for coming forward with a great plan, and I think really using the subdivision by law for, at the subdivision cluster by law for, for what it's intended to do. So, you know, there were some iterations, there was a lot of discussion, and, and I look at this plan and think it was a really good product at the, it's a really good product for, for the process, so thank you for that. Anyone else on the board have any comments before we?
I would just like to second your comments, thank you.
I, I do have some questions or comments on the documents themselves, but, I mean, I've been a supporter of this plan, so I'm glad to see it. I'm glad to see it's finally here.
Which document?
The, well, I guess-
Close special permit, I haven't read it, and so I'm not prepared to discuss it today.
Well, if I can just raise the questions, and then we can do, maybe they can respond to it before the next time. Is it okay, Alex? So, on the, on the surface, I think, in fact, I had probably encouraged sort of the low impact design on the stormwater, but I see that it's only tended to be like grass, I don't know. Some of the others that we've seen have other kinds of plant materials. So I'm wondering if there's something other than it being just a, a grass depression. For example, the Ford Ranch Road, which we've talked about, but they have a rain garden design there, which has some very specific plant materials called out, and I just think it could be more visually attractive that way. So if I could ask you to take a look at that and, and see whether that's something you would be willing to modify. And then, under the, I'll just go through a few things I had jotted down. Under the waivers, I saw about a waiver for the sidewalk being on one side, but because I was looking at this for something else, was, our regulations actually call for a landscape strip between the street and the sidewalk, which I think would be another waiver, if I'm not mistaken. But I had, Tim sent me those regs.
But this is-
It's not that required. So it's not required here? So they asked for a waiver for a sidewalk, which is in a reg, but then we don't have to have the other?
I'm not sure we're asking for that.
It's, it's like a waiver.
I'm not sure we're asking for that wa, for there not to be a landscape strip between a sidewalk.
Okay, then, that's not what I saw in the drawing, but it shows a sidewalk right next to the curve, the road.
Yeah, I-
All right, well, I mean, it's, it's really, I'm okay without having the landscape strip, but I was just wondering whether it needs a waiver, that's all. So if it doesn't, fine. Because here we're trying to protect the trees, I think we'll need a protection for them during construction. So, you know, something similar we required at Woodmere, so it has, they have to be marked, and they have to be certain, construction has to be a certain distance from them, so you don't damage the root ball, et cetera. So, you know, just some way to address that in, in like a construction management plan. When you widen the opening for the roadway, I think we had something come up on one of the projects over on Brushhill Road about the stone. So we want to make sure that when you remove stone, that it's, you know, retained and reused, and it's not new stone being brought in. Yeah. Just to, you know, sort of be explicit about that, I think would be helpful. And with that, I think it would be nice to have a landscape plan of the entrance drive. I don't know if you plan a sign there, or even a construction sign, but, you know, how the, the new, how the wall, the stone wall will appear, you know, in the, in the proposal, and with the widening. I think it would be useful to have a plan of that.
You're going to have to write this down, you know, Cheryl.
And that's taking notes. And then on the, in the, in the page 10 of the Exhibit C, the declaration. I didn't see, I made the note here, but I didn't see any reference in this document to a requirement for the storm drain system for each lot that's referenced in your narrative. So it, I'm presuming that when somebody comes to build their, their own home, that they're going to have to put that in, but it's not referenced in here, so I don't know where the homeowner, or the requirement to the homeowner would be.
I think it would be within the-
Asteride.
Yeah, and the requirements from the building department.
All right, so Alex, I'm just curious, if, if that's, says that that's how stormwater is going to be managed on site?
On site of what?
Each home, the, their driveway and roof drainage will be in their own site?
I don't think that we, we usually provide-
How do we ever know it's done?
Well, what we did do in the last outlook, we just did this with Pulte though. We did require a addition to their document that they maintain it as once a year, I think, especially the, the downspouts. Because those can just be ignored, and then it ends up just running into the, so.
And there are cul-deck chambers designed for each of the lots.
Right, what happens though is if those get clogged, then it just, it just runs into the ground.
We can add a provision to the-
Just what provision in there that you have to maintain them once a year or something.
Each unit owner will ma, lot owner will maintain its own drainage, storm drain system.
Yeah, required to, once a year annually.
That should be in the O and M with the stormwater plan.
Okay, so that's where that should be.
Yeah, because it's, it says right on 7 of 11, roof runoff note, cul-deck recharger shall be installed to recharge all proposed roof runoff. So that's for each one of them. And the maintenance of those is in the stormwater O and M plan.
Okay.
And I can add that as a condition to the-
In accordance with the O and M plan, it sounds like you can reference that, which is great.
All right, a couple of minor things, and then I'll be done. On page 11, there's reference at the top to an in-law apartment. In my, looking at this for something else, I understood that what we have in our zoning is called a temporary apartment. So, is in-law apartment actually something in our zoning? Is it term?
Addressed in the zoning, yeah. It's which, um-
I'm looking at-
Which number?
Number three on page 11, the very top, it's under restrictions.
They would call it, is that your calling for this number?
Yep.
Well-
Section three, right?
I don't know, it says here, a so-called in-law apartment.
Right. I mean, I can change the nomenclature.
To accessory dwelling, you're, maybe, make, make it consistent.
And then the same page on, in paragraph eight, there's a reference to an above-ground fuel storage tank being screened, but you're bringing gas service to the, to the site, right? So I don't, now that you would actually have a need for-
Why, why, why did you find it even necessary to put both the in-law apartment? I mean, if it's, it is allowed, allowed by zoning with the- Yeah, I just said if, that as a, that- You know, you know, I'm not trying to be difficult, and it's just, the guy down the street, if he wants to have an in-law, he goes to town. They allow, they allow. Why, why did you find it necessary to put in here? I mean, you're going to have houses there, if at some point someone who wants to have an in-law, they'll come to the town, so they would like to have an in-law, they'll set, they'll set up the guidelines, and they'll say, okay. There, there are times when developments like these occur where, where the development actually restricts the, the right to do that as a, as a condition of the development, and in this case, we're saying they can be allowed. Yeah, no, no, I ju, it, it, on the flip side, you didn't restrict it, so. I, it, this is not written out of whole cloth? These are, you know, is it taken from other provisions that have been approved by the board in other cases? And modeled after what we thought we did. I don't see that it's even necessary to put in there.
Anything else, Cheryl?
No.
You said there was one more thing.
All right, well, I did say there was one more thing, but I'm not sure.
You did that one more thing, already.
Alex, you ready to go home?
Columbo. One more thing.
I'm the one who sat in the other room for a long time. No, that's it.
Okay. Do we want to close this public hearing as well?
What I suggest is that we close the public hearing, and because of the length of time you've waited to approve the, the plan in concept, subject to creating a, a written decision.
I'm sorry, I missed that, I'm sorry, I couldn't follow you.
All right, I, close the hearing.
Yep, got that part.
Approve the application in concept.
Got it.
And, subject to there being, this is just something you could say we got approval tonight.
Understood.
Subject to a execution of an agreeable-
So she waited a long time, we should give her something. Understood.
It looks good, that's-
I got it. Do I, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so, will you be preparing a special permit for review?
I prepared a draft.
We have one.
We do, I'm sorry, okay. So we will review it.
And I've sent the comments in to Tim, and he can, he can then make one of his name as a-
Tim ain't going to be here, you know?
Next week.
He'll be back Tuesday.
You're going to be back next Tuesday, aren't you? This is something to look forward to.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I don't need to continue this, Tim, that was what you just said, right? Now we just do what we want to do it? All right, motion to adjourn, I'm made, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Hi. Have a good night.